Good evening everyone and welcome to the town board budget sessions. This is our first budget session. Today is Wednesday, October eighth. And we are here with town board members and we'll be looking at the different departments. Let's see, who do we have online? Lauren, can you get Rob online?
He's here.
I'm I'm here.
He's here.
Oh, you're sharing your screen. Hi, Rob. Okay.
Yeah, hello.
Hello, um, we're going to start with justice court. Because um, the judges have a have a are in session.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll be in session at six o'clock, so we we're just switching with Josh to start.
We have to open up the work session.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so may I have a motion to open the work session?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're all set. Let's see.
I agree.
Alright, so.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Rob or Carl, you can get us started.
Okay, uh, I'm not sure can you all see my screen or am I sharing the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so for anybody following along, this is page fifty-two of the PDF. This is the rather lengthy segment of the budget with the justice court uh with this loan page. So um, we'll just, I'll go through it briefly and if the judges or Diane or anybody wants to comment, they can. The salaries are contractually calculated based on the based on the union pay scale. Over time, we've left it similar to in years past at forty-five thousand dollars. We've gone over a little bit, but we're we're gonna leave it at that for now. The longevity pay is the same. The only thing of note really here in the personnel is the part-time help. And you see, we're quite a bit over the budget from last year. And if if the board would remember, last year we had Kathy Burns, who had been with us for many years, retire. And we have Andrea joined us and she was she was very new and still learning the job. So we've used Kathy to kind of supplement the court. And I think the judges can confirm the volume of work that they do in the courtroom is just in the court office warrants the extra help. So we've upped that budget a little bit for next year to thirty thousand. I think Kathy's gonna be in a little less than she has in two thousand twenty-five, but still she will contribute when there's help cover vacations. I think she still works court nights and so she's been valuable to us. So that was the only really big change there. The contractual services, office supplies, books and subscriptions, et cetera. Those are all kind of similar. Books and subscriptions, we lowered based on usage over the last couple of years. And everything else is about the same. So judges, I don't know if you have any comment, questions, anything to add, share with the board?
I'm curious, what books and subscriptions you need that's not relatively free at this point?
Actually, we we've we've cut back quite a bit on that because you can get everything almost that we need online. I mean, I can even do research online.
Right.
You can subscribe into LexisMxus.
The educational websites are really good.
Just the one subscription now.
Right, yeah.
And then we get the supplemental volumes like the annual DWI, criminal, town and village, the handbooks. And that's about it now. We we've cut down tremendously on on subscriptions because everything's online. And contractual services are our interpreters that we're mandated to provide and our court reporters who are from Bronx Supreme and very, very experienced and and wonderful. And that's it.
I have one other question I wanted to ask. Do any of the local courts use the audio recordings?
Yeah.
Is that is that more, I know it's more difficult in terms of getting transcripts.
Yeah.
They're wrong, but is it less expensive?
Yeah, we we do that. I mean, I've done arrangements in here.
We use them, we use it for our arrangements.
We do use it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been sitting in Terrytown and they use almost always the recording device. It's rare that we'll have a an actual report, but getting the transcripts is very difficult and time-consuming. It's a pain.
Okay.
Maybe the technology needs to improve.
It it, yeah, I mean, so there'll be a full day of court action on the tape and then you want the Jones case. So you have to go back and listen to the tape and figure out when the Jones case was. Also, if people aren't keeping their voices up, if there's an interpreter, the recordings aren't there. We've we've had issues. We've had disagreements about what was being said on the recording. So it's so I I think it's always better to have a transcript.
Um, are you guys expecting more conferences and travel next year? I noticed that it wouldn't.
We have the one annual conference. Kathy and I used to go to New York City for President's Weekend for the conference. And they stopped it during COVID. They don't do it anymore. And so I don't usually go to the conference anymore because I'm here twenty-five years. But Andrea needed to go for the first time. So we both went this year. Next year, she'll be going herself.
Okay.
Now, these things are always well well worth it.
Oh.
Professional learnings.
Yeah, there were um.
Really important.
But it's it's a twofold increase for me.
Andrea needed to go because Andrea thus far has only handled traffic cases. And so when I go, Andrea, it that my, you know, the plan is that Andrea will move to criminal because I only can handle criminal cases. And she hasn't really done any of that at all. But she went to the conference and she took criminal criminal classes. And so having done that and then working with me now, she knows what a rap sheet looks like and will, you know.
So I may maybe I'm not asking my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a very, no, that's okay. Just um, last year it for twenty twenty-five, it was a thousand. And then for twenty twenty-six, it's forecasted two thousand. I was just wondering is that more people, more conferences, more costs?
Well, we haven't gone in a long time and the last time we went, it was a thousand dollars. Okay, but now the conference, it was about fifteen hundred dollars each. And so, um, yeah.
Okay, that explains it. But yeah, that's that's all I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it was in Albany, so I guess we didn't have to go to Miami for this. But that's all I, yeah, so so. Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, well, we don't want to hold you up for too long. This is very clear and straightforward.
Thank you.
And um, thank you for all the work you've done to put this together in order to this joint effort.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So thank you very much and thank you for all what you do for us. And speaking of that, I know you've got you've got people waiting for you. Next door.
And. I I I have to say that um, I really like the town prosecutors that you guys hired.
Oh, thank you. Good good to hear.
No, I'm wearing.
Good to hear.
Aaron and David.
Alright.
Thank you for your courtesy. I appreciate it.
Glad you thank you that way. Thank you very much.
That's important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bart and I, they're not the best. They're not the best.
So Josh is online. His camera's not working. He is.
It's not that they could compare, Jared.
Here that. He'll never be replaced.
Yeah. Uh, so yeah, Josh is joining us online tonight. He is, he's at a conference up in, where are you? Up in Lake George these days?
Tell me Lake George, could it?
Alright, nice.
Yeah.
Is that place a conference?
It's not not Albany.
So anybody following along, it's page seventy-four of your budget document and the PDF. So Josh, I'll let you go ahead and run through everything. Similar to what I mentioned with the justice court, the personnel section is largely spoken for contractually with the salaries and the longevity. Josh has a small amount of overtime each year and he left that the same. And I'll let Josh take it from there.
Oh no, he just got kicked off.
Or maybe I won't. Um, well, we'll give him a moment to see if he pops back on. I'll just mention there there's not a lot of change in Josh's budget. There typically isn't year over year under the contractual, the second line down. Now he's texting me. Uh, the second line down where it's data processing, I guess old terminology, but that's the IT, that's his software. Those costs continue to go up every year. So it's about a three percent increase in that over prior year. But see, other than that, if you roll to the bottom line contractual services where there's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's an amount that we budget each year in case we need trial-ready appraisals on any of the the tax certuries. So that line is twenty-five thousand. We keep that about the same each year. Typically don't use the whole twenty-five, but there are some times when we have larger tax certs where we where we need a more detailed appraisal. Going couple pages down, the other one of note is the property tax refunds. That amount we've left at a hundred thousand. If you look back.
What page is that?
Uh, that is page seventy-eight. Look all the way to the left of the screen, in two thousand twenty-three. We budget about a hundred thousand every year. Last year, we I think budgeted one fifty because we knew we had this larger tax cert overhanging us. But in two thousand twenty-three, we had close to fifteen thousand in refunds. In twenty-four, we went up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Year-to-date, we're only at twenty-four thousand and we don't really have anything in the wings that's waiting for us that we are aware of. Any of the tax certs that are out there are are smaller variety. So we're comfortable with that amount, a hundred thousand going forward for next year.
Okay.
Josh is efforting to get back in, but he is not yet back in. So I can.
He's not on the boat.
And I can assure you, he's not on the boat and he's probably extremely stressed out at the moment and having been bumped off for his budget.
Cut a green screen behind him.
But if any, if anyone has any questions for me on his budget, just look at.
No, I don't see anything that really stands out except for, and again, it's a training and instruction. Seems to be, you know, a lot less. But I don't know if that's a yearly cost.
Um, it it's it's an annual, yeah, it's an annual cost. He does have to go to the this conference. So in order to maintain his standing, he has to, he's got continuing education each year that he has to, he has to go to, so.
I was just curious because it's down by fifty percent. So I was wondering if it's different every year.
Yeah. So I think what it was, I think he usually goes to two conferences and and he would be able to confirm. He goes to two conferences, but the last couple of years, there's one conference that he's been able to go to remotely. So he doesn't have the travel expenses and the lodging, et cetera, that are associated with that. This one was one I think that he had to be there in person and he obviously would like to have been with us this evening and would still like to be. But he's working with Kerry, but they just can't seem to get him back in.
Yeah, yeah, I think he was sort of right sizing that, what it's historically been in twenty-three and twenty-four. In twenty-three, we only spent twelve, twelve twenty-five and last year only ten sixty-five. So I think it's the greater utilization of remote travel for those conferences.
Right, right. Okay, that makes sense. Again, you know, another straightforward budget here. I don't have any questions. Anyone else? Okay, alright, I think we can we can move on. We can let him know that, you know, we thank him for trying to get back on. If there's anything that he'd like to tell us, he could pop back in at any time. But this seems pretty clear to us at this time.
Okay, I'm texting him at the moment.
Do you want me to get Sabrina?
Shall we get Sabrina in the meantime?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Sabrina will be on page ninety-one for all trips begin.
We're actually early. He never say that up.
I just did.
We're in the supremacist about to come.
That's supposed to say that.
Hello. Good evening. Just want you to step off the cord.
Where would you like him to sit?
Wherever you're comfortable, right there.
Just standing in this seat, buddy.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
So we are ready. Rob is sharing the screen up there. Hi, Rob.
Hello.
Okay. Okay.
So Sabrina, I'll let you take it away. Sabrina's got a few more budget lines than than the last couple meetings that we had. Similar with the salaries and the longevity, but Sabrina can talk to some of the other personnel costs because she does have a few more budget lines to to speak about.
Right, so I I'm, the development department has the budgets for the town engineer, the planning department, the building department, and the environmental coordinator is absorbed between planning and engineering. And there's also the zoning. But if you look at the budget as a whole, setting aside personnel costs, we have roughly a ten percent increase, almost a ten and a half percent increase between last year's budget and this year's budget. And those largest increases really relate to the inclusion of Robert Seoli as deputy town engineer in our personnel and our part-time personnel. He's still working on some projects that he's been involved in for a long time and as Jeffrey Gasper gets acclimated to being town engineer, Bob is assisting with that. So we did include him on a part-time basis with a limited number of hours per week to help ease that transition, finish out some of those larger projects. The next largest is again conferences and travel and dues and licenses, or not dues and licenses, but conferences and travel. The town engineer has a training requirement, continuing education requirement to maintain his license. So you see an increase of thirty-nine percent in that line. That's conference and travel fourteen forty oh four four zero. It's a small amount. It may look like it's forty percent and you're like, oh my goodness, but it's not a lot of money in regards to the benefit and the and what's in that dollar line. Most of our increases are really due to external fees. Licenses and registrations have increased. Our publications, publishing things in the paper have increased. I'm not sure if there's any line within this budget that jumps out to you that you want to talk about. The biggest jump, more substantial money is is in the stormwater line. And that's eighty ninety point oh six two zero. We had put in a hundred thousand last year. Rob was very creative in moving some existing funding lines and and kind of creating a funding source for stormwater of a hundred thousand. We added another forty-seven five to that line to help us meet our minimum requirements. So that that's a big number there.
And I'll point out to the board if if, just if you remember last year, and we talked about having to kind of ratchet this number up over a over a period of time because of the tax cap constraints and and the other constraints with the budget that just to to increase it all at once. So a lot of the stormwater requirements are phased in over a period of years and and our approach is a phased approach. So we're kind of, as we said we do last year, we kind of bumped that number up again and we'll probably have to continue to do that over the next couple of years.
But if you look at the total difference, forty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-six seventy-one is the total increase of between last year and this year's budget. Forty-seven thousand. What line is this, Sabrina? But that's just my own totals.
In in, okay, I don't, because I don't see that reflected here.
It's 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 on the screen, on page one hundred of the budget. It's budget lines eighty ninety, uh, zero six twenty and zero six twenty dot one. So again, page one hundred.
Stormwater and stormwater education.
Okay. Okay. Does this reflect the MS four?
That is the MS four. Yes, that is. That's when we say stormwater, we are referring to MS four requirements. And there's, this permit is a five-year permit. We are, we'll be entering year three in the permit cycle and your three requirements are due and different activities are due. So we have a stormwater team composed of my office, both Jeff, Gasper, myself, Miguel, Fibrillo, the assistant engineer. We meet with Ike and we meet with Bart and we talk about the different activities that each of our departments are responsible for under the MS four permit.
Okay.
So I know that this is an increase as we're trying to ratchet up. Like honestly, is that enough?
No.
Like how far off are we from what you like really think?
That is a very hard, I I can speak for my office, I can't speak for Bart. Right, you know, one of the things that we're working on is looking at hiring two students next summer to do our monitoring program, to go out and do our field work, working together. It would be great to have another staff person who's responsible for investigating stormwater controls and existing best management practices that were now required to 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 inspect. You know, if, I think ultimately, we would probably be looking at a sub-department of at least three to five new people plus equipment if you really wanted to comply with this permit. One hundred percent.
And we have to be there by year five?
Well, year five is when all of this work needs to be done and then we start again. So it's every five years, the permit gets reissued. And you know, this year, we are required to monitor at, monitor our outfalls or interconnections and our interconnections. So if you have a stormwater pipe, here here's here's a site. We'll call this DPW. It's known as a high priority site. There is a drain. Here, this is the drain. It drains here. We are supposed to monitor that drain. We're supposed to take samples at that drain. We have to, we, our program needs to be completed by the end of this year. We've completed that. We have drafts of the program. You know, we're complying. Next year, we have to monitor. And we have to monitor.
That's your department.
Once every five years. Yes, my department's responsible for that. And that's not to, and that's not to account for a part, I mean, and you'll speak with Bart and his budget tomorrow. He's got a lot of responsibility in relation to this stormwater infrastructure, in relation to roads. You know, we have stormwater education, you know, we're in the process, as you'll see, you know, the B stormwater section in supervisors' newsletter, we are required to do that. We are required to start the education of our contractors and our construction folks. The program that Asher worked with me to develop is regulatorily based. It doesn't even count for capturing individual septic systems and ensuring that they maintain their septic systems. We've instituted a requirement that before you can receive a building permit, you have to demonstrate to us that you've maintained your septic system. They have to demonstrate maintenance of their septic systems once every five years. So while we're at year three of the first year of the permit, once five years is reached, we start another five years.
So this is going to go up exponentially every year?
Well.
I don't know if it will exponentially.
I don't know if we could say that. This this go-around was a big, yeah, this was a really big bite. But Sabrina, I think what's important, we've made a lot of progress this year and I think it's important to point that out.
Oh, absolutely. But we are, we are completely compliant right now. We haven't, the one area where we haven't spent a lot of time is the actual field work and the data collection side. We're not required to do that right now. That's a year four and a year five activity, right? We will be completely compliant. You know, I I will be creative and figure out ways to do it, much like bringing Asher in to help put together the outreach program.
And this is, this is related to the GIS mapping?
We, yes, we have a consultant right now, Labella, who is helping us develop what we call our comprehensive integrated stormwater mapping program where all of this information will be up, will be available through GIS, an ArcGIS geographic information system platform where all of the managers who are managing managing and doing this work can input the work that they're doing and we have a live database that everybody is using, same platform. All the information is being entered. And when DEC wants to audit us, we can give them access to that database and they'll just look at it.
Well, I think it's been a heavy lift to start, but when the, I I'd imagine when the permit restarts that you'll have had a lot of these models in place.
Yes.
And you know, the cost is one thing, which is very significant, but the effort as well is is huge. And hopefully that will be that much easier now that you've put this in motion.
Yeah. Yes, when we get the programs in line, you know, absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, so the next five-year cycle, you don't expect to be as much as.
I don't know. It all depends.
Well, they may ask.
Exactly, that's the thing.
There's always a new and improved version.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so I don't feel like there's like a light at the end of the tunnel, honestly.
Oh, there's not a light at the end of the tunnel. Definitely not. They'll change it. You know, it I don't, I don't know if all of you were around, but the whole monitoring aspect of this permit is new for us to monitor and go out and do visual inspections and and log those visual inspections. That's very new and that is leading towards actual testing of the quality of the water coming out of the drain pipe. It's a precursor.
Sabrina, we should also, we should also point out that we just received, I think within the last month or so, our our VAC truck that we got a about fifty percent of the purchase of that covered through NYSERTA and Sabrina's work securing all those NYSERTA grants. If the board remembers, a few months back, we approved, boy, a whole handful of of grants that we received for electric lawn equipment and electric vehicle for the town and some new charging stations and the VAC truck. And and we got a whole handful of grants, which was fantastic. And one of them, we used to fund, halfway fund this VAC truck, which is going to make life easier on DPW. The the vehicle they had been using was very antiquated and undersized for its use here. That's going to help them to be able to clean out these catch basins and, you know.
More catch basins.
Yeah, to be able to get to more of them than they were getting to. So it it to, to some extent though, it's a manpower situation like Sabrina was mentioning. It's an issue where we physically don't have all the bodies we need to go out and do the inspections, et cetera. But we're, you know, we'll we'll hope to start increasing personnel. Maybe next year, we'll be able to add a person or two to be able to do this.
Yeah.
Well, we're not alone. We're not alone among municipalities.
No.
No.
I think a lot of people will have the issues with this and.
Absolutely.
We're we're in a way in a in a fortunate spot because we do have a good amount of staff comparatively.
Absolutely. Now, we we definitely are ahead of the curve in regards to setting up our programs and instituting our policies.
Right, so it'll be very telling how they move forward with the next permit. Hopefully having seen what people are actually able to do this one. But I'm very curious about this VAC truck. It's been the subject of a lot of discussion, you know.
You should go down and see it.
It's been a real highlight.
Yeah, you should go down and see it. It's an it's an amazing piece of.
So I I think that, I think we should all go see the VAC truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, like when we go on the Winter Plow, we can, we can go on the on the VAC truck drive.
On the Winter Plow, we should.
Yes.
I I think that'll be a little bit less.
It's the most fun.
I I think that'll be a little bit less interesting than the plowing.
Oh, you never know.
Yeah, you never know.
You never know.
You know, when my kids were little, that would be the most fun thing we want to watch, a VAC truck.
Hundred percent.
And I and I also wanna point out, uh my office is currently doing an upgrade to our to our permitting system, our records-keeping system for building permits. Um Lori Anderson and myself have been implementing new software and there's a budget line in my budget that actually gets allocated to the larger IT budget. Um but that is a very large project to uh create an online, it's a web-based program to house our all of our building permit information with the eventuality of doing online permitting. So that's a that's a big change for my office as well.
Does it, does that software allow you to save manpower in the office once you get there?
Great.
No.
Okay.
No, absolutely, absolutely not. No, it's it's really, the system we were using was becoming antiquated, it was no longer being maintained or serviceable. So we had to, we are forced to upgrade and everything today, when you upgrade, is web-based. It does make um um reporting easier in those areas of our town that do that do have web service. It's kind of live updates when an inspector goes out to inspect. He doesn't have to come back in and put it in the system, it's already being uploaded into the system, so it's time-saving
Mm-hmm.
for the individuals who are responsible for inspections.
That's good.
Yeah.
Just tea and stuff.
Okay, what else we got Sabrina?
Yes. I think that's it, um yeah, I feel everything in my budget is really kind of bare bones and we increase where we need to.
That's it?
Um I don't know, Rob, is there anything else you think of interest?
Yes, Sabrina, I you touched briefly on the personnel lines, but uh maybe go a little deeper into the part-time help and and how we got to that number, cause that's about the only real increase that you have uh dollar-wise, significant dollar-wise. So we are anticipating an additional position in there, it's what that is. And um we're hoping that position is a part-time code enforcement officer. Uh the building department itself is just inundated. And if you look on the revenue side, uh we've actually increased the revenue projections for building permits about two hundred thousand dollars for next year. Uh that's just based on the historical trends that we've seen in that revenue line over the last five years. We have far exceeded our budget each year, so we feel comfortable moving that up. But Sabrina's office is just uh almost twenty-four seven, uh that office, so it never sleeps. You see Dennis, you see Tom, uh they're they're almost working around the clock, those two guys.
Yeah. Yeah, and yeah, and you know, our other part-time line is our fire inspector, um who works part-time, Robbie. He you know, he does a heck of a job um keeping us in line and up to code. And then we have Matthew, who's been our scanning assistant and he's also the social media coordinator, working on our Instagram page. Um and then I I mentioned earlier, Bob Seoli is also in that line and helping out with finishing out his projects.
Yeah, they all do really great work.
Yeah.
How many hours does Robbie work?
Uh seventeen and a half hours a week.
I think he's needed all those seventeen and a half, he's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Sabrina? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much Sabrina.
I wasn't asking that to question his work, I'm just interested.
And uh. I know, I just care.
And just to say that, we know that you work very hard too, at all hours.
Thank you.
I can say.
Thank you very much.
Every everyone is always on call here at all times and that's what I found, so I just wanna say thank you.
Yeah. No, you're very welcome.
Since we're finishing you earlier, I will say, since we do have, this is my last budget, don't cry.
Oh, I do.
Um yeah, you have been one of the, especially during a very tumultuous time with with COVID, before this code,
It is your last month.
you are always accessible, I I have your cell phone number and always a response, but I'm always very grateful. And you explain things not once, but sometimes fourteen times. And I may have asked the same question more than three times. Back to back to back to back, so thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, it's been my pleasure working with you Jeremy for so many years, I'm excited to see you go. And I love working with all of you, it's a great town, great people, and I love what I do.
But, oh, thank you, thank you.
I'm so happy to hear.
All right, how good, thank you Sabrina.
Good night.
Good night, Rob.
Good night, thank you Sabrina. Um so I'm not sure the board, we're a little ahead of schedule. Uh Christina, I'm not sure if you're prepared to speak, but we could jump you ahead of Ike and and uh kinda expedite this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Certainly, yes.
She made sure, we made sure she was ready for her budget.
Okay.
Um I'll have one too, actually, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll wait for Jeremy, but my budget is pretty straightforward as always.
Um where do you start first, do you wanna do clerk or receiver?
Um do you wanna do um clerk first, what do you think?
What page are you on?
Everyone you want.
We'll do clerk.
Oh.
Who's seventy-nine?
Uh clerk. Yeah, seventy-nine is the title page, eighty-three is really the the uh the actual numbers.
We're in a second. Let's wait for Jeremy since since he's getting leave.
Now now I know why everybody, when they uh when they meet, they say the screen is really small, cause I'm, I can't. I'm sharing the screen on my end.
I'm gonna have the the page.
I do too, I just, what page?
Yeah.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, yeah.
Really, well, look at the bottom, make sure it's it's.
Oh.
Well, it can't be that old.
It's fresh.
Number twenty-five.
It's fresh, I.
What did it say?
Lauren made sure it was fresh.
Cause we got, we had some bad ones, Lauren, if she's there, listening.
She's she's got it.
Lauren is there and uh those are fresh as of today.
It took care of it.
Twenty-six. She went, she made a special trip to get it today.
February twenty-six.
Okay.
Okay. Fresh as young as time.
And Jeremy, sorry, I have the Jolly Ranchers with me, so uh.
I know, I was looking forward to them.
Yeah, Friday morning, I'll be there.
Alright.
Uh so we're ready for the clerk. Um so Christina, first, I think I I just wanna point out in the clerk's office. So uh after we kinda did the switcheroo last year where Lauren came back uh on the administrative side, um there's kinda been a a gap in Christina's office as a a full-time employee. It was included in the budget for two thousand and twenty-five. Um we've had a hard time figuring out the position and the title and we're working with county civil service. So we actually have two interviews scheduled and I think a few more. So we're we left that in the budget for two thousand and twenty-six and we're looking to fill that position. Uh the current position, we're gonna fill it with, or we believe is uh a permit clerk. So we will see how those interviews go, but uh doesn't look like a huge change over last year, it's just contractual increases uh in that budget. Um but uh we we do wanna leave that position in for next year. So uh with that, Christina, I'll let you take away the rest of the budget.
Yeah, that's that's fine, it's again, it's pretty straightforward, it's not a lot of sizzle unfortunately. But we do in the town clerk's office, you know, we it's down for taxes, but we also do parking. We've seen the parking increase, parking is uh takes a lot of time to get people on track and 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 getting their permits and handling those things. Um and again, that I do see parking really increasing, the commuters are different, they're not doing it every day. But we have similar numbers of permits purchased, but they're just not going in all the time. So far, we've sold over twenty-one hundred permits.
How are we out-of-town permit-wise?
Out-of-town, um we're not up to the seventy. Last time the board agreed to sell up to seventy, we we hadn't hit that threshold. The we find with the out-of-towners, they um brought their tickets, I think.
They rather, they ra- they rather get tickets?
And if they run, they. They, I think they roll the dice that they're gonna get a ticket because they can park in the needed spots and pay for the day and occasionally there aren't spots and then they just pay the tickets. Yeah, so that's just, you know, it's a business decision, if they're only going in twice a month or something like that, they hope that they're gonna get a spot.
Do you know whether or not, and this may be a question for court, those out-of-town people, are they compliant paying their tickets?
Uh-huh, um so are some more, so I.
It's hard to enforce, but we can enforce it when I'm here by booting.
That's right, and that's the, I don't wanna take everybody's time up tonight with it, but um I will say they come to court and they tried to get them dismissed, but I do think that it is a cost to me, that's if they decided not to purchase the permit, they started to risk, you know, getting the ticket and um.
Has that increased since uh I would say pre-COVID?
Has one period.
Um the contesting of the tickets and the the.
Yes, because during COVID, yes, very much so.
The pattern that you were just finding.
So during COVID, I think what happened was, it was almost like no rules, right? No one knew what was going on, people that were going into the city, we tend to try to support them. The we um the town did not have any part-time parking enforcement, they didn't have crossing guards at first. We just kinda stripped down bare bones, so people were doing what they wanted to do. They were, some people were purchasing permits, a lot of people weren't. So I think they got used to doing kind of whatever they wanted to do, get a lot of new people in town and were trying to get them back on track to purchase permits and that there are rules and that's.
Right, so so things haven't really changed from pre-COVID rules, it's just that people are are out of the habit because
That's right.
Um I wasn't on the board at that time, but I'm imagining that we're getting a lot more complaints than we used to about these rules that have been in place for many years.
That's right.
And the signage that's been in place for many years.
Generally, things haven't changed probably for about fifteen years. The only change that was made was the non-resident spots were moved from behind City Bank to the most southern part of the lot to accommodate downtown parking. When they did that, they created additional spots for the non-permit holders. So what happens now, people, I think they were, I think, I don't know, they're just kind of always expecting those spots to be there.
Yes.
We tell people, don't rely on those spots unless you're on one of the first trains of the day. We tell people that over and over, if they roll the dice and then they get a ticket and then they get upset, but there's there's um just just the way it is, because if we don't enforce it, I think it would just be consumed by the communities around us and they wouldn't be able to protect it for our residents. A meter permit is fifty dollars, if you're senior, it's twenty dollars. So in order to check it for residents, we have to patrol it and we have to issue tickets.
Right, how much is a ticket?
Um thirty dollars or fifty dollars. If you don't have a permit, it's fifty dollars, if you don't pay the meter, it's thirty dollars.
And when's the last change?
And technically, you could get two. If you don't do it, but they don't even do those, you get one or the other, like let's say you don't have a permit, you're parking A, technically you can get two, but they usually just give you one. I don't remember the last time.
We changed that about five years, the past five minutes, bro.
I think it was like ten years ago.
I was gonna say, well, maybe less than ten, because that was here, so maybe like eight though, eight years ago.
Is that about?
It must have been before COVID.
We've had a while ago, I lose track of time, I remember changing it.
Yeah, it was probably like eight, maybe eight years ago, they they bumped it up a little because um it was so inexpensive that people, again, we're just like.
So there's, you said people are still looking at it.
Yeah, we still have a couple, we have people like we know don't purchase a permit, park someplace, they don't live in town and they, you know, it's costly to do business, they're like, I park here once a week, it's cheaper than buying a permit. Do we know what penalties are in other towns for that? Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the penalties are. I'm just wondering if it's something we need to look at again and obviously not for tonight. Yeah. Yeah, but they um our parking enforcement officer is working really hard and trying to get people um more accustomed to it. Again, we have a lot of new residents from since COVID, real estate market heated up, you know, and the some new commuters, but I I think everyone just kind of got used to doing what they wanted to do in the town, you know, we didn't have, we dismissed all of our part-time parking people. I don't remember what it was like, but anyway.
And and how is the parking compared to pre-COVID numbers?
Um it's.
Is it back to a hundred percent, not quite?
No, it's not, well, no, it's it's not, I think the permit numbers are, but they're purchasing the lower, they're purchasing like the meter permits
Yeah.
and they're not going in as often.
Okay, so the price is not back to a hundred percent, but at least the.
The revenue is not back down yet, but the revenue for the fines is up much more.
Right.
But but is the parking lot as full as it used to be? Cause they're so non-compliant. No.
Okay, that's not, okay.
No.
So we're we're based on what we've seen this year, we are continuing to get closer to COVID numbers. We're not there yet, um and I think, I think what Christina says is accurate. Um we switch parking systems and the reporting is a little different to get used to. So we're trying to parse out what is parking permits. They kinda combined, in the past, we had, if you went on the app and paid by phone, it was it was uh easier to differentiate. So the revenue overall uh is trending closer to where COVID is and and we're um we've moved up the budget estimate for twenty-six again, we're still trying to stay conservative on that. But if you go out in the parking lot, uh Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, there's a good amount, there's still a few spots towards the back corner and the uh the old skate park is still pretty much empty. But uh Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, it's pretty full, so you know, not quite pre-COVID, but but pretty good.
And um I mean, that in my office doing a great job. The program was created for us, so she's been working out the kinks kind of since we started. And Pango was created for us, they they, this was a product they weren't offering anyplace else, I think they started it someplace else, maybe Takahoe. Um but it's, we're working out the kinks, it was, it's um it, we're just trying to make it more user-friendly, I shouldn't say there's kinks, make it more user-friendly for the people to go on, it's not, doesn't seem that sophisticated when people go in to purchase. But the um paying for the meter, things like that, they use the geofencing, people like that, it just kind of comes off the prompt, like hey, it's a purchasing permit sometimes, so I think people have a little hiccup with. So anyhow, so I just wanted to mention that is something that we do. Um we are, um we lost one of our part-timers, she just, you know, life got busy with other things and she's not able to give us that time, but we're still holding down the fort. And and like Rob said, we we are interviewing, hopefully, we find a great candidate that um we provide excellent customer service and be a good part of our team for residents. And there's nothing really, you know, utilities are up, it's not something we we um control, insurance, that's something we control. And. Yeah, nothing much, not too much. The contractual is up a little bit, that's the function from the um from West County and um the elections. And that's it. Rob, can we go on to taxes?
Yep, we can go to taxes, uh eight fifty-six fifty parking, was there anything, yeah, utilities, you mentioned that is going.
Yeah.
And that number was budgeted low the last couple of years and that's why it appears to be a big jump uh right here on page eighty-seven, four lines down, it appears to be a big jump from what was budgeted prior, but we just must have missed that in last year's budget because we did see a number of thirty-one thousand, so um again.
What did we miss in last year's budget?
Didn't increase it?
We we didn't increase the budget, we left it at thirteen-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just see, you know.
Uh so yeah, you wanted to go to receiver taxes now Christina.
The word?
Thank you.
Uh that is page seventy.
Are we going?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have a running room.
Yeah.
But we always have.
Over here?
Yeah, we already.
We're almost done.
So. Alright, see you. Coming through there, you can see most of it is um.
Pretty much in check.
Yep, pretty much in check, we have um business as usual, it's nothing really, it's hate to say maybe a little boring, but it's a little boring.
Boring is a good. Yeah.
Right, yeah, boarding is getting going.
Boarding should have been keeping the money, keeping the status quo.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try to keep the.
It has been for the most part.
Yeah, we try to keep everything.
Yeah, your costs here are pretty routine, I mean, um you know, printing costs uh to get the 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 tax bills, et cetera.
Mm-hmm, and we print, I just, yeah, we print the tax bills in-house
But that's really it.
and we stuff them and we mail them in-house, which is something that um a lot of municipalities do not do, a lot of them send them out. That's just um we, just one more way that we can make sure that they get to the resident residents in a timely manner. And um we have some communities that, like I said, ship the whole thing out. We do it with our own two hands.
Yeah.
Bring the post office and um.
Thank you for uh the savings. You're under the top scout.
Yeah, thank you.
How many um pieces of mail do you guys put out each each month?
I should have known that, but I I still, no, that's okay. I'll, I can get that to you.
I'm sorry. I I just because I I know that it's an impressive amount of work.
So.
It, yeah, several thousand.
So parcel-wise, you're at about what, sixty-five hundred or so, it's give or take, but.
Yes, yes, but I don't I don't know that, I don't know if that's exactly what the um count is.
Right.
But it's probably around, it's close to that.
Yeah.
At six thousand.
That's.
Folding, stuffing.
That's a lot of paper cuts.
But we're happy. We're happy to do it.
But your billing budget doesn't go up.
Yeah, no, we're happy to do it and it just again, it helps us maintain um control, quality control, doesn't leave it doesn't leave, you know, us until it goes right to the resident. We're not wondering when the mailhouse got it out. We're not wondering what was lost.
Right. There's a certain level of security in that, I would appreciate that, you know.
There is a certain level of security and yeah, and we go through, you know, Patty is wonderful. She's probably one of the most senior part uh members of our staff here. And she just, you know, we, she's constantly going through, she takes a lot of pride in what she does. And she can pull out little, you know, from time to time, she could pull out so-and-so's bill that she knows they like to get it here and do this and she offers um a lot of, a a lot of um um support to our residents, seniors and everything, to try to make sure that they can pay their bills on time and make it as easy as possible.
I think that's wonderful. We think it's very personal and like community-minded.
Yeah. Yeah, she's.
That's really great.
Yeah, she really does have a, I think everyone will agree with me, Patty's just a a pleasure and just a wonderful attitude. She loves the residents, she loves her job.
Mm-hmm. It's great.
She respects them and she, yeah, takes a lot of pride.
Yes, lots of much of an interpersonal process.
It's not, you know, she knows, she, people will call her and we picked up people's checks that they can't with some seniors and I can't give them that.
Yeah. That one's really amazing.
Get washed. Yeah, she's very, she's excellent, so.
Yeah. Alright, well, thanks. Thank you for the great work.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, I'm enjoying it.
It's mine.
My pleasure, I I love the.
We can extra points definitely for coming here.
With definitely.
Oh.
We ask you less questions.
Ah, thank you. Alright, alright.
I don't see, mainly I don't see the twizzler, so.
No, so.
But that's, this is supposed to be healthier for you, start chopping.
Uh healthy.
Start chopping.
Yeah, that's good.
Peanut butter. We want the artificial colors.
I'm sugar.
Turn turning down the twizzler almost got me in trouble very very much. Need it.
Okay.
I'm judging your kind of.
I have butterfinger, you know, butterfinger. That's cool. Let's see, so we are, yeah, we were running early, we're still running early, but we're on time for Ike.
Alright. Yeah.
We're on time, yeah.
Okay, so we're doing our this part, and that's one.
Oh, that's what you said.
You're pressing around, yeah.
This is forty-five minutes for Ike.
He's got a lot to talk about, yeah. Yeah. And then it's.
You have him.
Um, okay, we're we're ready for Ike.
Is Ike there?
Is he in person or online?
He'll be in person, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Are you um sending him a message?
Just calling him.
Yeah, so did I miss anything pertinent?
Um, you know, everything's very, very straightforward. The assessment, budget, step for justice court was very easy. Um, did you come in for Sabrina's?
In person, but not. Thank you, very good. I saw her walking out.
Okay. She's got a lot of um, she's got a lot in her department, but that was also pretty straightforward, you know, the numbers, okay, or not, um. There aren't too many changes.
Yeah, to to be honest, most most departments don't change year over year. Um it it, there's not a lot of lines. We've been bare bones, you know, for for many years from the beginning of uh the tax cap era and we really do. Um I've mentioned this before, but I, you know, we have different board members and may or may not have heard this, but the process we go through when we start back uh we start in July and we ask to give all the department heads homework. They go home uh in July and spend the month of August preparing their projections and then early in September, we meet with them and we get really granular. We go down into how many printer cartridges do you use? And uh you know, we look at how many times a year we send mailings out and that, you know, we we're really, we we reach out to our software vendors to uh to find out their increases ahead of time. So we're really, we don't leave a lot year over year that can really be changed. Um you'll see some changes where different departments, if we need a vehicle, you'll hear Ike mention that in a minute, uh not to give too much away, but we'll need a vehicle or a piece of equipment that we haven't purchased in the past or or just wasn't necessary. So that's where you see some of the increases, but uh we haven't added any staff members from uh twenty-five. We're uh we're continuing to work with the same staff. Um so I just uh you you won't see a ton of changes in a lot of the budget lines.
That's good.
So Ike, I guess uh you ready to go?
Yeah, welcome. Ike, Christine, good to see you.
Hi, thank you. You as well, always.
Thank you.
Alright, you know, you've got a big department and a lot to, lots to report on.
Yes. Yes, we'll try to make it painless.
Hopefully it'll go easy on you.
We'll try to make it painless and move along quickly, so.
So page one thirty-one is uh the start of recreation with the budget numbers.
Okay, whenever, whenever you're ready.
Okay, alright. Uh well, thank you for having us and uh like I said, I'll try to move through this uh as quickly and 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 painlessly as possible for you guys.
Okay.
Um it it's been uh another exciting year for us in in twenty-five. Um one of the things I do, you know, talk about rec admin and uh we'll get to parks and everything else that we're doing, uh but one of the things that came up in conversation with Rob and Carl uh is we're back and actually exceeding what we were doing prior to COVID at this point, where uh we're back to a full programming staff. Um and uh our Christine's got the community center packed almost every day of the week at this point. Uh we're doing this classes in in open building on Saturdays now, which has never done, been done in the past. Uh we've expanded a lot of our children's programs, uh so I'm just really happy where we're at at this point and and kind of where we're headed uh with from a programming standpoint, so.
For for the extra programming for Saturdays, for instance, is that mostly the seniors or um children's programs as well?
It's actually both. Uh we have youth programs in the morning and then we have uh kind of an open.
Open, you know, downstairs, we have it open, yeah.
Yeah.
Downstairs, okay, yeah, that's such a nice room.
Yeah, for the seniors, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, if they wanna come in, pick up a game or something, you know, whatever, just come and have coffee or whatever they'd like to do. Downstairs is open.
I've seen that you have a new garden program.
Yeah, so um it's really expanded. We have four or five beds out back that the park staff have made.
As well.
Um and we have over twelve, twelve to fourteen people that come every Tuesday to care for and um there's three members of the garden, the um Newcastle Garden Club that come and help, you know, facilitate it and yeah, it's doing really well. So there's about, they're gonna go all the way till the end of the month and then
Right.
regroup again, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
And what's great, a lot of, like we got partnership with the garden club is a lot of it's educational for the seniors, you know, um
Mm-hmm.
with the plant, when to plant, and they get to harvest it every week, so um actually a lot of the stuff that they pull from the garden, we've been using in our luncheons that we have for the seniors, so it's kind of goes full circle for them.
That's really, that's terrific.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, so they're really appreciative of it and um so yeah, so it's good. Uh with the rec administration, um there isn't much uh in the way of of changes for next year. Uh like I mentioned, we're we're at full programming staff. Um we're still short of a full-time office admin, but you know, we're working on that on down the road. But as far as programming goes, we're full staff. Um I know the staff, Christine and Jamie were very appreciative of uh being able to go on the national conference this year, so uh you know, put that money back in the budget for next year, uh both with local and and national conferences. It's really a great experience for the staff to go and see how other, you know, municipalities and towns from outside of the Westchester bubble uh operate, so um you know, a lot of that's very beneficial for the staff, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but like I said, no real, no real changes there. Uh for parks, as busy as usual, um a lot of projects this year that they that they worked on in-house. Uh there are a couple of things that we are asking for for next year. Uh the departmental equipment is replacing outdated landscaping equipment that we bought the first year when we brought landscaping in-house. So it's kind of, it's costing us more to fix it at this point than it would be to replace it. Um so it's two of the mowers and then the third piece of equipment is a uh, it's actually, it's called a sprayer, but we use it for fertilization for all of our fields.
Which, where are we now?
That's for parks, uh. Those riding mowers.
Page one thirty-three?
Yep. They are the one, they're both, the sixty inches of rider, the forty inches, forty-eight is the stand behind. And curious, uh any any is technology for what you need to do caught up for anything electric? So we currently have one electric mower, uh it's a stand behind and. Well, I'm asking in terms of the new. The new stuff, so that's where I was getting at. It's, so the one that we have is good, um it it serves a purpose. We use it on however uh side properties. The issue we run into right now with all the electric battery power that we noticed after buying this one is the weight of the machine. So if the ground is wet at all, we can't use it. It's three times the weight of a regular mower, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, so if it, any sort of, now, obviously this should have been lucky with with the lack of rain. Uh but that's the one issue that we found with it so far is that, you know, it's over, it's almost fourteen hundred pounds and our other mowers are within around four hundred, so.
Are they getting lighter though?
That I don't know. I mean, this is a, the machine we have, we bought this year, uh so it's
So maybe.
Relatively gradual uh for that size, but yeah, that was the, that was the one big negative that we've seen with the battery-powered mower so far is the weight. I'm curious, what was the price comparison? Oh, they're they're a lot more expensive. Uh it's twenty. A lot more percentage-wise. So the battery-powered mower that we bought was twenty-seven, uh that same mower gas power is usually in the twelve to fifteen range. So it's a, it's a big difference.
But we, like, we paid for that, uh we got nicer to grant money for that, right?
Yeah, helped cover that. Okay. That cost, so, but just there is a difference in cost and you know, different in weight, but from a functionality, it serves its purpose and, you know. Meaning, meaning, but for the weight, it would get the job done. Correct.
So can this, just because I don't lawns, um you can't use it when it's wet because it pushes down too much and it can't.
Yeah. So you'll you'll just, you create rust in the uh in the fields when you use it, so.
Okay.
But it, when it's in use, is it as effective as a gas mower?
Uh it has been so far. We haven't used it on the on the bigger fields, uh but for all the smaller side properties, it's worked well.
Okay.
And then the other ask here is for, it's a replacement vehicle uh for, it's an F-150 uh, like a pickup truck, just for the replacement for what we had that is no longer in service.
So you're operating short one vehicle right now?
Yes. Yeah, and the the one spare vehicle we have is actually being, has been approved to be surplus, but we're using it because one of our other vehicles is in the shop with a transmission issue, so. So, um but yeah, this would be a replacement. And then if you go down below, you'll see an increase in the maintenance of land and building in that we're including, uh we would like to start the process of replacing all of our garbage and recycling bins throughout all of our facilities. Um we have a few old steel drum in most of our parks and they've all been in the rust and rot in the bottom. The issue is that they're not cheap, so uh the the lesser expensive ones for what we would need are about four hundred dollars a piece. So we'd like to kind of phase it in. We'll do, I think we allocated, we're gonna do twenty next year out of the forty or eighty that we have to do, and we can do it over the next three years is what we're looking at, if I remember correctly.
Are they still ten?
They are recycled, the recycled plastic, like what they make the benches out of and things like that, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so should last a little bit longer.
Okay.
What's the list like about that? I don't know. I I wanna make up a number for you, but they shouldn't rust.
Exactly. Are they, will they withstand weather critters and bears?
Well, all of the ones I'm gonna order, so one of the things I don't like in is the, it's gonna be an open canopy top on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um there will be a top, but it'll be open.
Like those way, oh, I'm sorry.
Um I don't like the push ones because they are disgusting and nasty. Like, you, if you go around and you see the ones that have that, you gotta push it, no one wants to touch them.
So they drop it next to it and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't make it in on that little half a push they give, but it just sits there, so. Uh and they're difficult to keep clean and all that, um so they will all have a canopy on it, but it'll be an open canopy source.
So they're not, they're also not gonna be super resistant to to critters, right?
No, no. Um we do have a few of these in some of our parks, um and we haven't had a huge issue, um but, you know.
The little critters are probably not a problem, but the bigger ones, maybe.
The bigger ones, yeah. I mean, we we, you know, we could certainly see how it goes with those tops. Um I just, the the big issue right now is the humans, um and not them in our job.
Those animals.
Yeah, and the, those big critters are on top of the uh.
Yeah. But I know, I know, I know, I know little critters are like the kids who play.
I think there's always gonna be pros and cons with the.
Different, no, it's trash and that's always gonna be.
Yeah.
I guess I was more worried.
I'm just a problem.
I was more worried about how much damage they might be able to do to those.
I wouldn't worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, the damage to the can itself, I wouldn't worry about.
It's really gonna be as of, how often can the trash be picked up?
Right now, we do it twice a week.
So. Yeah.
Mondays and Fridays.
Okay, and you find that that's sufficient?
Yes, yeah, yeah, cuz it, I mean, obviously the weekends is our, in all of our facilities, the, when we get the high traffic, so we have to do everything Friday.
Yeah, do you assess that periodically? I I noticed a while back that the trash at Marion's place near the city bank
Yeah.
could tend to overflow and, you know, that started when Franny's, this this is a good problem to have because it started when Franny's came and, you know, of course, people are going there
An awful lot.
and then the taco place, you know, I'm glad the businesses are doing well.
So they've actually got us though. Yeah, we, yeah, we don't handle those garbage cans in town. That DPD.
Okay, so that Marion's place is DPW, that's not, not considered a little park?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we maintain the park, I don't think, we don't have to do a garbage can in there, no.
You're not in charge of that?
No.
There, okay.
So, but we could certainly keep an eye on it, you know, during the week if it's uh, it's a little crazy, I can let the guys know.
Okay.
And do we have consistency in the types of garbage cans that are used between DPW and parks?
Yeah.
Well, the downtown ones are
Oh, the the street skate parks.
Right now are are di, yeah, it's all the street skate ones, so ours would be different in the parks. We typically go with a green and a blue
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
um in all of our parks facilities. The ones in town, I think, are all black.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those garbage cans are really expensive. The ones in the street.
We don't want those in the parks.
No, no, otherwise you're gonna see this number go up a lot higher if if we go down that road, so. Um if anybody has any questions for parks?
Um Ike, I had, we did mention one more thing for the maintenance of land and building. We had uh some uh bottle filling stations we were going to either purchase or replace, was that correct?
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, sorry, yeah, we were gonna work on replacing water fountains with bottle fillers.
Okay, do, what are those locations?
So the first one that we'll go is the one at Genny Playground. That water fountain's not working at all, uh so that'll be the first one that they get replaced for the spring of next year. Uh we're gonna replace the one at Amsterdam uh for parks, uh for camp. And so I think those are the two, cuz they're about six thousand dollars a piece, so.
Wow, okay.
Those, oh, those, yeah. It'll be another thing, kind of like with the garbage cans that we're gonna chip away at over the next couple of years. That'll be another thing, kind of like with the garbage cans that we're gonna chip away at over the next couple of years.
No grants or anything for stuff?
Well, we. Ike, we we should mention that we bought, the the first round of those bottle fillers we bought off of state contract were actually really inferior. They were significantly cheaper, but we, they were not durable for use out in the parks like that, and they had plastic parts. Inside that kept breaking, and then we couldn't get the replacement parts, so then we'd have to turn the bottle filling station off, so.
Correct, like the one out here.
You get what you pay for.
Yeah, so we buy like, and and that's the thing is, by the time I get the replacement park, but we've been replacing them almost every year. Uh on the five that we have, that we bought through state contract, um that's like this one out here, it works for the first. You know, few weeks of the season in the spring, and then all the plastic interior parts fail. And the way they constructed these is it's the same water line that goes to both the bottle filling station and the fountain that's on there. So you can't circumvent the two, so like if the bottle filler fails, can't use a drinking fountain, you know, and vice versa.
Can't walk. Right.
Um so it's poor design, poor quality.
Not not with any of the cheap ones.
No, it's not, you know, and we thought we're gonna get ahead of the curve through state contract and uh none of them. None of them seem to last, so, uh all the good ones are expensive now, so.
So as I was, I think Rob started talking about, like, are there grants available for anything like this?
We had looked at one. We had put in for one, I don't know, one or two years ago, uh but it, that money went elsewhere. Um so I don't know. I see Rob smiling, uh yeah, it depends on what grants come through and what we can, you know, what the priority is, I guess.
I mean, that just seems like something that there might be grants available for, you know, to reduce the use of single-use plastics and.
Right.
So I was just curious if uh that was on the radar.
Yeah, and when and when these grants come through, you know, there's always a list, right? There's always a list of what should be done or needs to be done and.
Yeah.
Um so, they're on there, it's just, you know, where where they where they fall in the in the packing order, um but we'll start chipping away at those uh next year as well. Um that's it, so parks. Community center, uh like I said, you know, there's nothing. No big increases for next year, a little bit with the receptionist, but that's really, that's due to our Saturday programming that we have that we created this year. Um so that's just that extra bulk next year to make sure that we, what was that?
Okay.
But, Steve's got that building rocking over there.
Can I go back to parks for a second?
Absolutely.
Um how much are we investing or spending on the pond this year and pond maintenance?
So pond maintenance. See, that's why, that's why I always, I should just bring my cheat sheet, so it doesn't. I like write notes on here and then. So in the maintenance of land and building, there is an allocation of about twenty thousand dollars, is it fifteen?
Are you referring, are you referring to the cleaning of the?
The Genny Pond maintenance.
Every, every year, there's like seven about ponds and pond care.
Probably you have. Is it ten?
Ten.
Ten, okay, yeah, so our, our costs.
Yep.
Well, this was the whole period, what that. Yeah, I just wanted to know.
So we have allocated in there ten thousand dollars going forward, that will cover the annual maintenance of the pond. Uh the big expense that's still out there is the hydroraking, so, and I, and I don't wanna give you a number on that, cuz I don't have.
And that should be happening soon, right, November, we said?
Well, that was the original plan, uh we had. A, I don't know what to call it, Rob, maybe a lapse in response from from the company uh for quite a while.
Well, what we're running into again is the delay with the DEC. And.
Start to say that again, Rob?
We're running into the delay again with the DEC, um the requirements now, so. Uh we're in the process of uh procuring the permits to do that work. It was a separate, it's a completely separate permit. From the work that we've done, uh the treatment of the pond, separate company, separate permit, uh separate process, so we're now in the middle of that. Um we don't have a date, Ike, I saw you email him this morning or yesterday.
Uh yesterday.
Response, but he didn't have an update yet on the timing of it.
Right, so I, yeah.
So what what's gonna happen now? I mean, we won't be able to do it in the winter, so we're gonna run into early spring, that's.
Yeah, so that's. That, it's right, like I don't want this to snowball yet. On the conversation, I'm I'm hoping that the permit process will get turned around pretty quick, uh quicker than they think it will. And we'll still be able to get it done before the pond phase is over, is what I'm hoping for, so, but yes.
And and if not, we won't have to do the pesticide application, the herbicide application.
If if not.
Well.
We're gonna do that.
We were gonna continue that next year anyway, weren't we Ike?
Correct, yes, that that we will do every year, and it is part of the maintenance program for the pond.
Well, it it did seem to do the trick, but really the underlying problem is there, so.
Correct, and that's our version of a reset button right now is the hydroraking, um you know, when speaking with the environmentalists. Uh from Little Berry that did the treatment for us, you know, and she she made the comment that ultimately that pond really needs to get dredged at some point, um.
Which is different.
That's, that's an entirely different thing.
And it's not something we're gonna tackle now, really like the hydroraking is to buy us more time before we have to do that, so the hydroraking is gonna get all the loose sediment off the bottom. It'll help improve flow, but it won't get it back to the depth that it originally was when they created the pond back in the seventies.
How much do you, uh do you know how much depth is off?
No, and that's what we're waiting on from, also from um. Tigress is how much material is going to get removed during the hydroraking, and then that'll give us an idea of what we need to do for the dredging. Uh but the dredging is, that's.
Future problem, right?
Yeah, future dredging.
So the dredging is removing part of the pond floor?
Correct.
Oh, come on, wow.
Making it deeper as opposed to just the organic crop that's sitting there.
Yeah, so if it's deeper, there's less of that fish kill problem?
Right. Well, we we shouldn't have a fish kill going forward when we stand on top of the treatments and things like that because you're not gonna choke it out, but there is so much.
Yeah.
Because over fifty years, there's so much organic death and buildup at the bottom of that pond that it's, you know, it's now shallower than it was.
Right.
You know, fifty years ago, so getting that organic material off the bottom right now, the hydrorake will help, but it's not the end-all solution to really get the pond back to what it is.
I don't want to run too much rabbit hole or the trout hole. Are we gonna have, are we gonna have the fishing next year or is that gonna be compromised?
No, other fishing is next year, yeah, yeah.
We have it this year.
Yeah.
That is no doubt in terms of the dredging, I mean, the hydroraking.
Yeah, yeah, we'll cross that bridge, you know, if we need to, uh I really would like to avoid doing any hydroraking. Once spring rolls around, um just from having to have that material sit out and dry.
Right.
So we'll uh we'll, we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
And and the dredging, I think Dennis would tell you is is, we would like to avoid that altogether, I mean, that that um.
That's a big undertaking.
That's a, that's a difficult, yeah, that's a difficult process to to receive approvals for, so, um.
And I, I guess the question would be, does the pond have to be deeper than it is now?
No.
You know, um.
No, the the hydroraking definitely needs to get done, and once we do that, hopefully now.
Right.
Be enough to satisfy us for the next uh next amount of years.
Right, so what would be the advantages of the dredging?
You you're increasing flow in that pond, right, so it's, oh, and naturally it will flush itself out throughout the season.
Okay.
Um and it'll help limit what you have to do as far as the treatments go, you know, going forward.
That'll allow aerators to work more efficiently.
Right, that too. So, but nothing that we need to worry about right now. Let's get through the hydroraking and uh.
Okay.
Sorry, back to the budget.
Well, let's get through it, okay.
Let's get through that first and then we'll we'll get there after that.
Is the nine eleven memorial under your umbrella?
Yes.
Um so did we land on a final number um for the like renovation? Yes, I believe we did, and we're splitting that between this year and next. Okay. The next year, Rob, what was that final number? Was it sixty?
It was sixty, sixty thousand total, yeah, uh thirty thousand or thirty thousand.
The night. Thirty, thirty. Thirty thirty, mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And where does that fall in the budget?
It should fit in.
Uh I think that also.
Well.
I think that also falls into the maintenance of land and building in that line.
Yeah.
Yep, that's where we have thirty thousand budgeted in that line.
Okay, that's really not a bad increase considering all the stuff that's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Uh our next one is uh special programs, so I'll teach you guys names, but yes.
What page is that, sorry?
One thirty-eight. Right, Rob, say what you have, say what you have.
Uh.
Did I skip a page?
Yeah, you skipped art center.
We did go back a bit, but I think we're at page one thirty-six.
Yeah, art center is one thirty-six, Ike, I don't know if there's anything.
Okay. Nothing really with the art center, uh the only, we added some money in there, I wanna get a shed for outside the building there. Uh to house all of the play equipment that we have for our summer camp program. Right now it just kind of sits out for the year. Uh so I'd like to get a shed to it, uh stuff in, so that was really the only.
And art center instructors is going down to zero, where is that going? So is that, I assume there's more now?
So our, all of our instructors there are now contractors, so I think you'll see in the line, you'll see independent contractors on there.
Yeah.
Or programs support that might be listed under, um so that's where all that is now, so we don't even use that line.
Got it.
We made them all independent contractors, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, a few years back, so, yeah. So that's really a few years.
For uh repairing the kiln?
Yeah, we put money in there just cuz we like to have.
It does need maintenance from time to time, yep.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna just keep some money in that line, something always seems to, but we have two kilns in there right now.
Yeah.
It's a popular program though, right?
Yeah.
Very popular, yeah, yeah, and we've expanded some of the classes there as well. Like to do more, uh but we're working on it.
Yeah, Jamie brought in some, Jamie's brought in some new ones, which is great.
Huh? Yeah, yeah, so.
You wanna do more programming at the art center?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, we have, I mean, it, you know, we we do have some openings during the week and why not film if we can?
Okay.
Even if it's during the day, uh for adult programming, so it's always looking at the max hour facilities.
Right, maybe I should bring some culture committee over for a tour, see what the space is like.
Okay, it's not a huge space, but yeah.
Just so that maybe they could percolate things.
Sure, we're always open to suggestions.
Right.
So, um.
I mean, do you want like suggestions for that?
I, yeah, no, I I'm always open to it.
I don't wanna like, what's my want, don't, you know?
I'm always open to it.
Do you think he's gonna say no? He's a smart man.
Yeah.
Well, I I can back for the um, I can back for the ceramics program, it's really great, I've done that. And it's uh, you know, there are a few days available for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um what else do you have for adults? Do you have painting or drawing?
Yeah, so it, so there's, adult ceramics is really the, like, there's a couple of variations of that, that's uh, that's the big one there. Um there is.
We have watercolor, I know she's trying to bring that back, um I think maybe an instructor isn't doing it anymore, but. She did, Jamie just added like a calligraphy class, we've never done that and it.
Oh, I was actually just gonna ask about calligraphy.
Yeah, it's like a one-night like workshop thing and, I mean, within a day, they already had twenty people registered and a waitlist, so that's pretty exciting.
Wow.
Trying something new, and then she added a paint and sip um for an evening as well. I don't know what the numbers look like.
Is that a different instructor or?
Yeah, she's, yeah, yeah, we have a few instructors, but sometimes, like, calligraphy, I think she met with someone who had that special.
Zip?
Okay.
Um skill, so it's somewhat different than we have used before and stuff.
Remember.
It's BYO.
Yeah.
Yeah.
BYO, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever you wanna sip on.
Oh, okay. And you know, whenever, whenever you do it, people have to, have to want it, you know, there has to be a demand, so it's not just whatever you can think of.
And I think it's the way she marketed too, it's falling um soon, so they're gonna learn how to make table cards for their settings, so it's perfect for the holidays.
Oh, okay, right.
So I think that was the smart move right there, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
That's a good idea by Jamie.
Okay. What's next?
Uh Ike, if you would just indulge me one second, I'll go to page one thirty-seven, and this is the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center Department. It's really. Um accounting wise, it kind of falls under the chart of accounts under recreation. This is not really an area that Ike has oversight over. Kind of more falls under me, I guess, at the moment, but uh just to uh, you know, the the board has talked, we're looking to hire a um. A permanent theater manager slash creative director, so. We're working right now, um I'm working with Rachel, so if you remember, she, we brought her on to do a kind of a two-month uh interim. Uh. Kind of a a study, and she's been fantastic so far. I met with her about a week ago. Uh very comprehensive, she's meeting with everybody in, around, and associated with the chat pack. Uh she is looking at every aspect of that building, she's got some creative ideas for programming, so um. We're, it looks like we're getting on the right track with this building, so what we've needed to do, we're we're leaving money in the part timelines. Um that's where we're currently, um if you see, currently we've spent fifty-five hundred year to date. That's for Victor and Lisa Tizzo that work at uh the arts, at the uh chat packs, sorry. Uh and they're, they are there when the events are happening and and there's somebody that has to go in there and uh kind of manage the theater while that's going on. Um you, we'll leave that in there, we're not sure what that will look like going forward. Really where the big increase comes, where you look under contractual services. Uh where we moved that number uh up to about eighty thousand dollars uh from six thousand dollars, and we talked about adding. Um both the uh the theater manager, creative director, and we've put, I've put some funds in this line for. Possibly some other uh costs that could come with that. We've talked about creating a new website for that. Uh looking at the ticketing service for that, uh and even possibly an advertising budget, which I have uh factored into there, so. That's what we're seeing, um you'll see uh an increase, so it's about a fifty-four thousand dollar increase over the prior year on the expense side. If you look at the revenue side, I've projected that to go from thirty to fifty thousand, I've increased that by twenty thousand, so. Uh it's not a one-for-one, but I think we're going to have to absorb a little bit of pain early on on the expense side. So that we can finally get on the right track, uh I'm working with Rachel with, for a more detailed and comprehensive budget. It's just not here yet, we don't, we're not at that stage yet, so um, you know, I will meet with Rachel again at the end. Of uh her term, which will be the end of October, we've got, she has some deliverables to provide to me, and I think we're on the right track, but um. You know, we're, there will be a a little more expense associated with this, I think, and that's gonna pay dividends in the end.
That's amazing. Does Rachel sound inclined to come back after her little deliverable?
Uh I. I I don't, I don't wanna speak for her, but she sounds very.
Well, we don't need to get into that now. Yeah.
She, she is excited. She's excited about the project, I will tell you, and um.
Okay.
Working with her, the the, the depth of the um research that she's doing is far more than I would have expected. She is very involved and very active and has some great ideas. Um we haven't had anybody involved like this since. We took over the chat pack, um you know, we've been kind of by the seat of our pants and just kind of estimating costs based on what costs had been before and. Without any real uh projection, which is not how I like to budget, but it's just, we haven't. It's been difficult without understanding the revenue and the programming that we could bring in, and then we had COVID right in the middle of all of that, which really reset everything. We were. Kind of on the right track, we had a children's program all set to go, uh that was actually taking place, I think we actually held the first event. In like February of the year that COVID hit in March, and it just derailed that whole program and and uh it never came back for us, so. Um I I think it's a positive development for sure.
Great. Yeah, I I think it's an important investment, um theater is uh in a category in itself, and I I don't think any of us are theater experts, and I think that. Um it's really worth having someone who will look at the creative side. Um, it's really worth having someone who will look at the creative side and provide, you know, a vision and a goal. What, okay, what, what's the goal?
I was a little, I was a little offended by that, I saw cats.
He is a professional.
That's better.
I thought, I didn't have, I had said something wrong, but okay, I generally, uh.
That's why I was making up the thing. I know you saw his makeup.
Thank you.
Okay, present company, it's excluded from that, I mean, we do have some expertise here, I recognize, but it was, um. Really important to, to have some goals and a way to make sense out of what we can do with the theater that would be. Not only productive and, you know, remunerative, but serve the community, uh, as well as we would like it to, you know, to serve. Uh, both as, um, you know, as an, an area to bring in programming and an area for, you know, for the community to come and have, you know, as we people can have their own programs as well. You know, one example is the, um, the Lunar New Year, which, um, which draws in, I mean, a packed house and people from different areas, and that's. Really a homegrown program, and we have some of our committees who have, you know, who, you know, where we have a full house. Um, the Holocaust New Year Rights Committee always has, you know, great programming there, so, you know, it's a combination of bringing in outside programs. And, um, having programs that matter to the community and come from us as well, so it's a great opportunity, and I'm really glad we're putting the investment in. To, you know, make it, make it work as well as it can.
Okay.
Thanks for.
Uh, one, one last line, I wanted to, one last thing I wanted to point out, uh, the bottom line Chat Pack Utilities. Uh, budgeted this year at forty-five thousand and budgeted to go down next year thirty-five thousand, uh, going down by ten thousand dollars. We're, uh, that's, we're, we're hoping that's the decrease that we're going to see from the solar panels that are on the roof. Uh, that building has been pretty expensive to, uh, to heat and cool, uh, it's big ceilings and. Big spaces to heat and cool, and we're hoping that the, uh, solar panels, they are installed in place. And, uh, they're working, it's too early to have any feedback on the effect on the electric bill yet, uh, they were just finished at the very end of the summer, so. Um, but they're in place and we look forward to, uh, the positive impact on the utility bill going forward.
Right, speaking of the utility bill, Rob, um, under the final current projection.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah. No, it's, it, it's called human error, that's, uh.
That's a cold, broken fat finger.
That's an extra zero, it should read forty-two thousand.
That's what I was hoping you would say.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the final current projection is, is hand entered, and, uh, when you're entering some hundred and something pages worth of budgets, I know from. Experience, uh, how tedious that can get, so, yes.
That's, that is completely understandable, I am glad that's what it is.
Also, I, I was thinking we have the, we have, um, the LED lighting as well.
Me too. Yes. Yeah, that was, uh, finished, I think last.
Have we been able? What? Well, supposedly, right, it's supposed to save a lot, have we, have we been able to calculate any savings from that?
Not yet, I think that was just finished, it was this year, right Ike, was it back in February where that was?
Um.
Um, maybe a little closer spring, but yeah, somewhere around there.
I think it was back in February that it was. Yeah, okay, um, and, and one.
Well, it may not be a whole lot, but I'm curious, yes.
One of the problems that we've had making comparisons with the utilities at Chat Pack, which was actually, was a good thing for many years. The town kinda had possession of it for, since two thousand sixteen, but we hadn't completed the acquisition, so we were basically. Leasing it for a dollar a year during that timeframe, and during that frame, uh. SG Chappaqua was still paying utilities, so we didn't have access to those utility bills to, to check historical usage, so I think it was. The end of twenty-three, twenty-two or twenty-three, when we finally took possession, when we actually, they, uh, gave it to us. So, um, we don't have a lot of historical knowledge on, uh, on the utilities there, so it's kind of hard to make comparisons. Certainly, once we, uh, once we see the effect next year of the solar panels and the LED combined, and, um, and I will point out too. We're replacing the boiler there, that's scheduled for, I think at this point, October twentieth is the installation date. But that's a, that boiler that's in there was existing with, uh, with the building, so it was put in thirty odd years ago. So a, a new boiler, a new, uh, technology, hopefully it's a more efficient boiler as well, so, uh, we'll definitely be looking at that closely.
Also, the comparisons may not work because our usage may increase, so we won't, it'll be apples to oranges, we won't really be able to compare.
Yeah, it, it's, it's very hard to know.
So.
In all elements.
Yeah, I guess there isn't room in the Chat Pack budget to address the green room issue, is there? You know how it's like three quarter walls?
The downstairs.
Mm-hmm.
Like that don't go all the way to the floor?
So that's, that will be taken care of very soon.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, so if, so what happened there, if anybody does not recall, um, there was an issue where we had a. Flood in the downstairs area, and what ended up happening when Toll Brothers started their construction. We believe they hit one of the roof leaders that caused the water to back up into our basement, and at the time. We did not have a working sump pump, and we wouldn't, we had never had a problem with flooding, and, uh, all of a sudden we did. And it damaged the flooring, and, uh, and they had to rip the drywall out, so they put the. Top panels of drywall in, they didn't put the lower panels of drywall back because they were afraid that the problem wasn't fixed yet. So they wanted to wait till Toll Brothers was done in that area, and, uh, we had done some other drainage work, uh, associated with the handicap parking lot there. So we wanted to wait till, till all that work was done before we restored it, so it's actually, that was one of the items, uh, Rachel brought up and, and. Uh, had a conversation with Walter, and so tho- those panels are gonna be in place, and we're gonna end up, uh, finishing the floor as well.
Amazing, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, sorry Ike, we hijacked your, uh, presentation.
That's quite all right.
Uh, Special Programs is next, page one thirty-eight.
Yeah, so this is all of our, uh, special events throughout the year, and also. Under this line is our, all of our co-sponsored programs, or all of our programs in which we do an eighty-twenty split with all of our contractors. Um, so that number that you see down there in the co-sponsored programs is basically what goes out, the eighty percent of what we bring in.
What's an example of that?
Oh, boy, I was.
Almost all of our programs, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so, Mad Science, uh, one of our contractors that we use, we do an eighty-twenty split with them, so we take all the registration in.
Oh.
And then, uh, and then at the end of the program, we give them eighty percent of whatever revenue is collected, and we take the twenty percent.
Okay, good.
So, um, yeah. So those, that's actually, it has gotten back to, uh, where we were a couple of years ago, um, we're doing really well with that, with, with those, uh. With those contracts and with those programs, um, you know, seems to be working out really well for us. So I don't know if anyone has any questions? No, okay.
No, this one.
All right.
Yeah.
There it up. Uh, Rob, did you want me to tell, I mean, we did pull some money out of, out of there, just from events that aren't running anymore, but, so. We're, we're asking for less.
Oh, the special events apply?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're continuing, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Because we do have summer camp, so.
Yeah.
Don't wanna skip over that.
Nope, yeah, we'll, we'll get there.
Okay.
Uh, we can actually skip everything else and just go to camp, if you want, because obviously it's the, uh. Most of the other stuff is all, you know, youth athletics, I guess that programming is going really well, uh, especially we saw flag football outside tonight over there on that field. Um, you know, programs are going well, we're still continuing with the sports, uh, training and instruction for all of our coaches. So that's what that fee is, and then the forty thousand dollars at the bottom of that, that basically covers what the school district charges us to use their facilities every year for camp. It will be six, I think it's six fifty-six a day next year to use their buildings, so.
Sorry, so camp, the camp expenses are under, on page one thirty-nine?
Well, just the rental of the facility, the school facility, yes, and it's a carryover, this was from.
Okay.
Years ago, we just never moved the line out, it's a, it's basically a, a facility rental expense, but now it's just camp.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we left that line in there, it used to be, used to be eighty thousand dollars annually, and then we cut out.
Right, that was when we used to pay the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we went through a period of time where we changed some of our camps around and, uh, some of our needs were a little bit different, and then we've gone back and. And the school was, uh, pretty accommodating this year, I know it's difficult to get any space during the summer because the school. Um, when, when it's our busy time for camp season, it's the school's busy time to get any construction projects done. So that kind of sometimes limits the facilities we're able to use, is that correct Ike?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it was a little small issue.
But we. Well, with, with the one exception with, uh, Con Ed having to come in, right?
Yes, yeah, we made it work. I think the, uh, we, we went up to the church that day, right?
The church.
Yeah, First Congressional hosted us for a day. So, uh, so that's youth athletics, the next page is, uh, youth fitness, uh, some of our younger programs. Only really changing this is, we have a little bit of an increase in the instructors, and that's with our dance program, that is now huge, thanks to Christine. And, uh, and her instructor, um, so we've added a little bit there just to accommodate the ever growing expansion of that, of that program, which. Actually, right now is using the Chat Pack on a weekly basis, uh, for two classes on Mondays.
Uh, no, no, um, four classes on Monday.
Four classes on Mondays.
Which allowed us to put more programming at the community center.
Right.
So it was kind of nice to be able to do that, yeah, we have ninety, um, kids in the dance program, so, and we offer.
What kind dances?
Um, ballet and tap, mostly, um. And, uh, we have adult belly dancing, but they're not, um, part of this right now, um. And then we offer two shows, we do a Nutcracker, so that'll be coming up the first week in December, and to a packed house, and then in June we do our June. Recital, again to a packed house, so it's great, yeah, it's fun, and again, the belly dance, they, they'll come and do part of the recital. And so it's nice to see the intergenerational, like, it just adds to it.
Hmm, that's fun.
Yeah.
So do they use the stage for the classes?
Yes, yep.
That's great.
Yeah, it seems to be going really well out there, they really like the space, yeah.
Yeah. We're busting that code right now.
Yeah, yeah, we're busting the kids up there after school, so.
Yep.
So, camps. Uh, so. I mean, I'll, I'll run through most of this, uh, some of the big things I wanna get out of it, first though, um. With camp registration for next year, we are going to be the first Saturday in February will be camp registration. And we're going to stagger the registration times, so each camp will have its own registration time, we're looking at ten, eleven, twelve right now, as, as those times on that Saturday. Just for, kind of relieve some of the stress for parents that have kids in multiple, multiple camps when it comes to registration. And I would like to institute online, uh, for registration, no in-person registration, um, it's getting. As you all know, we have passionate, passionate residents, uh, and I think it would just be easier on all sides if we keep registration online. And those folks that typically pay in cash will be able to do the e-check, uh, on through Civic Rec, so.
And you're confident all those people rushing the system, rushing the system is gonna not crash it?
With no fee.
No, I'm not confident, but it's the system that we have, and I'm hoping that by staggering the start times, it will alleviate some of that traffic.
How many people were registering off, offline in the past?
So what has started to happen is, uh, uh, last year was the biggest influx that we had, uh, cuz people felt it or thought. That that gave them an advantage when it came to registration, uh, by coming in person, so, uh, which it doesn't.
It's not people who don't have access to online, it's.
No, it's, you know, in the past before, originally it was mostly people just wanting to come and pay in cash, right, they wanted to avoid the credit card fee. And just come pay cash and, and that was it, uh, it's starting to, over the last couple of years, transforming to people that think it gives, thinks it gives them an advantage. So then when it doesn't, then they are not happy about it, and, you know, it creates an uncomfortable situation for my staff, uh, here in the building. So we will have staff in your office on that day, uh, answering phones and, and helping as needed, uh, but we won't have the office.
How many, uh, ballpark people were trying, tried to register in person, or registered in person last year?
Shoe by shoe.
Uh.
It's had to be close to sixty that we had come in.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't really remember cuz I was totally shooting the phones, but, um.
Cuz we had, we had staff up here, we use the assembly room, and then we had staff down in the office answering phones.
Yeah. And working computers, yeah.
Right, so I think it'll just be a cleaner process for everybody, let me just go down one.
Communication to manage, I guess.
Yes, yeah, so and I'm hoping that by staggering the start times, it'll alleviate the stress on the system and the stress on the parents, so. But we did not notice a difference with this, with this new system, just to, I just put it out there, it behaved the same way as our previous system did. Um, it got overwhelmed, it started kicking people to the waitlist before sessions were full, so, you know, just. I'm hoping that by staggering these times, it'll help all of her out.
Now, Ike, everyone got in, right?
Uh, yeah, every, everybody that wanted to get in got in, right, there was some in the travel camp that wanted specific weeks.
That's what I recall hearing.
And they did not, but.
They, they did not, but, um.
Correct.
That was the on the go.
Yeah, for a travel camp.
Yeah, all tots, tots.
But for, for tots, they all got in, so.
All got in.
And Camp Adventure.
Camp Adventure all got in, okay, so on the go was the, the buses as usual, that's always, um.
Well, right, and we took, we actually, everybody that wanted the six-week bundle, got in, it was the folks that wanted individual weeks.
Okay.
Um, that, there were some that did, and, you know, we, we took the bundles first, everybody that wanted to go for six, the full six weeks. We accommodated that waitlist first, and then there was some individual weeks that didn't get in.
Do you ever let, um, those other kids in who don't want the bundle, let them in when the six-week campers can't make it, wasn't it?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Like, I suppose that would be hard to manage.
It's, you, you, you really can't, uh, especially from, especially from our, with all of our Department of Health regulations and the amount of paperwork that we need.
And they need to write in the numbers too.
Uh, for each camper, you know, to do that just wouldn't be feasible, so.
Right, right. Got it, okay.
From a practical standpoint, uh, if someone wants to try to get in early, you know, you're staggering it, I think you've concluded from logging in and signing up, okay.
Yes, so they'll, so, let's just say we did, we go tots, Camp Adventure, Travel Camp, if you log in at ten o'clock, you're not gonna be able to get Travel Camp.
So they can't sneak in.
You will only be able to access tots, yeah, so, um, so just, that's, that's our plan of attack for my department.
Okay, good, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Godspeed.
Lots of, lots of people on the phones.
Godspeed.
I guess, I guess what Holly was trying to get at, if I can assume, is that the people who would come in are going to be, sort of clog up the system online.
It would have been no different than years past, no, it would have been no different than in years past.
So it was at like half and half? Okay.
I just wanna make sure there weren't people who had no way of registering otherwise, were not being excluded, um, by online only.
No, we haven't run into that issue, and, and we do keep spots aside for, and actually. Conversation to bring up now, uh, is, we always allocate fifteen spots, typically five in each camp. For, uh, financial aid. Right, and we, and we typically reach out to the school district to see if they have anybody, enroll anybody, uh, so last year we ran into a bit of an issue. Well, years past, it's always been they've gotten to us late, right, the school district has gotten to us late, we've got listed names that, you know, we can't wait for March to, to fill these spots. Last year we had over thirty.
Yeah, yep, it was.
Over how many?
Over thirty.
Thirty requests.
Requests for financial aid.
Wow.
Uh, we were not able to accommodate them all, um, you know, we, we kind of, cuz because going into registration, we only allocate five in each camp. So, if we're still comfortable with that, we'll still allocate five in each camp. But most of the financial aid applications, just to give you a reference. But most of the financial aid applications, just to give you a reference, are receiving ninety percent financially. They follow county qualifications as far as number of dependents, uh annual salary.
Are they resi- are they residents or?
They are residents, yeah. Yeah. Uh so they're, you know, if camp's a thousand dollars, they're paying hundred dollars, not even a thousand dollars, um so. Just uh.
I'm glad we can all.
That has to be resident, yeah.
You said that all of the ones that were referred by the school district would have all qualified for that same.
Uh yeah, well, just about everybody, all of our financial aid applicant, applications fall at ninety percent.
How do you choose who gets in?
First come, first served. So.
But it's coming from the school district?
Right, so typically
Maybe I'm not understanding this.
So what has happened in the past is we typically fill out before the school gets us, uh all of their names.
Mm-hmm.
Um if not, it's, we tell the school district, like last year, we did over thirty names, it was like, okay, well, we can only, we said that we only have this many spots in this camp. So whoever comes to the office first with their completed application, that's who we're gonna take.
Okay.
So, yeah, we don't, I don't do a lot of this system in the office or anything like that, it's whoever comes with their completed paperwork and payment first is who we take in. So. But if the board is still comfortable with us doing five for each camp, then that's what we'll stick with.
So you're do- you're, in total, how much are we, lack of a term, giving away? Fifteen, five and spot, three point five?
Yeah, it's, it's depends on the camp, like travel camp, it's a lot more than, you know, so if they go for all six weeks, right, and they're and this year it's thirty-three hundred dollars for all six weeks, if they, if we're subsidizing ninety percent of that.
Sure, what, what about, I mean, if the dollars are still the same, i- i- if, if, are all these kids doing the full term?
Most, yeah.
To get more kids access, can you s- not offer for the full term, in other words, three weeks and three weeks, or whatever it may be, you know, split it up so you have more kids can get access, it doesn't change our dollar. You understand what I'm saying?
They can, they can.
They can use daycare.
Yeah, it's good, and now you're like, yes, I, yes, the short answer is yes. Um but now you take that family that does get in, now making only do three out of the six weeks, so they gotta find something else for some of their kids to get up for weeks, right?
True, but at least.
They're probably using it for daycare, which um.
And does that single those kids out, cause if other kids are joining?
I'm just thinking ways to expand, to allow more kids in the camp, that's, that's my thought.
Right, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. Travel camp will get tricky only because we don't split it up into two sessions, you either do all six weeks or you select individual weeks. Um but you know, the other two camps, we, we do a six-week and a three-week. Maybe uh an answer we need right now, and we'll, right now we'll stick with the five in each camp, but if, if, you know, something else comes up that you guys think might be a better fit, then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's simple, so I think it would require some more thought.
Yeah. So.
I agree, it's taking out that, just to get more kids access.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh so everything you see in here, the increases for camp, that's all based on, so especially with travel camp adding a third bus. So, you know, with that becomes the additional expense for tickets, additional expense for transportation, and additional expense for staffing uh for travel camp.
I think, and you told me something that um I thought is interest, is important for people to understand in terms of increasing um camp adventure, no, camp on the go.
Hmm.
Um I don't think it's just a matter of buses, it's also a matter of the venues that
Correct.
you choose and how many kids those venues are able to take.
Correct.
So it, it's um, it's difficult to expand that camp beyond a certain point.
Right, because we don't wanna expand ourselves out of uh facilities.
Right, so I mean, it's understandable, but I thought that was one factor that people might not have thought of.
Right.
You know, they might think, oh, you just need to get more buses and we could get more kids in, but it's actually the places that they go will not take that many kids.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to be able to like
This is the factor.
You'd have to be able to fully double it, right, so that you would have, or had two venues at any given time, so then you could, then you have a proper staff and buses.
Right, yeah, then you, right, it's, you, yeah, cause then you get to a point where you're, yeah, you're splitting the camp, um
Right.
You know, and I think for right now, I think this is a good spot, uh to stick with the three buses, uh if you, you know, from a demand aspect, I think we're, we're okay.
Do you want, that, you also wanna try out, okay, thank you though.
And then one of the other things, one of the other changes that we're gonna make for next year is with our CITs. Uh they pay for camp, counselors and trainings, they, they pay to come to our camp to be a counselor and training. One of the things that I wanted to add for next year is a trip for them, so a trip in the first, like the third week of the first session and the sixth week of the second session. Um just as a little kinda perk uh for our CITs, so that's what that bump there is, uh what's that?
That's nice.
Right, that's in camp adventure, uh we had added, we're gonna add a trip for fourth grade as well. To kinda give them a little taste before they go to travel.
Oh, okay.
We're seeing, we're losing a little bit of retention, um
Okay.
For our fourth grade campers. Because you're a camp adventurer from kindergarten, that, so you know, they kinda they go there, they're there for four summers, and it's like that good summer, they're glad they wanna try something different, so we're hoping that this maybe will kinda keep those kids around for that fourth grade year in the summer, like knowing that they'll now get a trip uh as part of their camp package, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot.
It's a good idea.
See how it goes. I don't know, you guys have any other questions with camp? Okay. Teens, uh the big one there is our, our ski trips, again, last year we added the third bus, we'll do it again this year. Uh so that's that increase with the transportation and tickets and staffing. And we'll do our best from keeping traffic kids that are trying to use fake IDs to get on the buses. You know, right, you relax, right?
No.
Yeah, parents would find out that, you know, Ike is sick or not going on the ski trip, so then maybe send Carl and you know, with the bubble, Carl will go and see that he's Ike, and he'll get on the bus and they'll go, like their parent for, yeah, so.
That's a little dangerous, scary.
Yeah.
I think the fact that Ike is six foot five and Carl's fucked.
Well, they're coming, they're coming from the schoolhouse to the town bus, so the town, the town staff does it for the kids, the schools for the kids, so.
I think Ike was a bad example.
Really.
Yeah. You laugh like, like how old is he, he's almost five, man.
Realize this is not fun, man, except. I'm tall, I guess I'm taller than you.
You gotta be. Um so that's it for teens, uh adult rec. Tracial service, that's our, that bump there is just an increase with our instructors based on increasing programming. So. Uh all is going well there. And seniors, same thing. Uh Christine's done a lot with the trips, the lunches, uh the supplies, all that sort of stuff, uh the program's kinda really grown over the last really two years.
I only hear great things about it, so, I mean, outside, great things, I mean, really, great job, because I, I only hear positive, positive, yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Yes, um.
Thank you.
That's all, that's uh, that's all Christine and her crew over there, uh they're, they're really doing a great job. Um. And let's see.
Yeah, I, ditto, I second that, it's a good program.
Thank you. Social services, all wrapped into that senior blanket, uh Beth Stager is our, our social worker, uh she is phenomenal with all of the stuff that she does for us, uh the grants that she gets through the county, all the paperwork. But what she handles for us, uh dealing with the county, senior services.
Home deliver meals.
Yeah, home deliver meals, all the rides that we give to our seniors through town.
Five days a week, yeah.
I have five days a week.
And they're still taking the trips? To like, to the city or?
Yeah.
Is that still going?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do that mostly, you know, with our other seniors, um Beth kinda focuses more on the homebound seniors or those who can't really get out of the house, so she oversees the home delivered meals, she makes sure to coordinate a volunteer driver five days a week for the whole year, um and then also, uh we give rides to, I mean, we give rides to everyone, but those who are homebound, um you know, doctor's appointments, food shopping. It's really, you know, an à la carte kind of experience for them.
And all that driving is from volunteers or, no?
No, no, we have for the meals, that's all volunteers, we have paid staff Monday through Friday to take people to their appointments or shopping, you know, food shopping thing, whatever they need, or coming to our programs, that's huge too, we wanna make sure they can get to
Okay.
exercise or luncheons and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay. There.
I think you guys don't pat yourselves on the back quite enough uh for the senior program that we have, and so thank you for all of it. It's an important part of our community.
Thank you.
So are those accessible vehicles that you have, like how does that work?
Our bus is accessible, if we need it, there is a lift, um so far we haven't had to use it, we do have a few people with walkers, but they're still able to manage, um
Yeah, it's true.
We generally use the Ford Flex a lot, it seems to be lower to the ground, and so that one s- seems to be the one that the seniors
They prefer.
prefer and can ex, you know, access a little bit easier, so.
Yeah, great.
Well. That's us in a nutshell, any questions?
Okay. I think I've asked all my questions as we went along. Is anyone else good?
Good.
Okay, well, thank you for the, thank you.
Great.
A major job that you're doing.
Thank you, right. Appreciate it.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a good lot.
Yes, definitely.
Well, the fun department.
Alright.
Alright, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Yep.
We're, we're not.
Bye, thank you.
Oh, because we did, um, no, we're on time.
Alright, so the.
Um.
Christina ended at eight, and so we're just a little after eight.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
That's not bad. That's pretty good.
So we'll uh.
Hopefully you're, you're healthy, but.
We have counted in. Okay, Rob, I, I think we're at our last category.
Yeah, so we'll just, uh these are the budget lines that uh the, the budget departments that Carl, Lauren, and myself kinda come up with, again, like some of the smaller budgets, uh a lot, not a lot changes from year to year, I'll touch on first the town board, um
What page is that, Rob?
The forty-eight, forty-eight. Um not really any changes, uh a little bit, we lowered the special projects and events, we may take a look at that in the next version of the budget, so I thought we were maybe gonna leave that the same, but it looks like we dropped it a little bit, so. Um the boards and commissions, special projects and special events, those are the lines that we fund, uh some of the events, arts and cul- arts and culture committee, uh SAB Conservation Board, we're sponsoring a, a speaker coming up, uh uh these are the lines that we use for, um we're having the volunteer dinner coming up on the twenty-third, we pay for that out of these lines, so uh typically, we don't spend all the funds in the lines, if you go back and look to the left, uh on, in prior years, there's usually a little budget, I think that's why we lowered the amount, but I think we'll probably move that back up, so it would be twenty-five, twenty-five and seventeen, a total of sixty-seven thousand between the three of those uh lines. Um so a- again, that, that spans all of those different events and those different committees. Uh this year, the Arts and Culture Committee, we're now up to four murals, or almost at four murals, we've uh installed three of them, and the fourth one is gonna be unveiled on December fifth. Uh so the uh Arts and Culture Committee did a lot of great work there, I know they are planning to uh fill up the other four vacant arches on the other side of the uh the uh roadway there. Um we've got, uh as I mentioned, the Conservation Board, the SAB, uh they had some Earth Day events that they uh funded out of there. And uh one of the uh special events for this year was when we hosted the uh Municipal Officials Event earlier in the year at BIA. Um so those are examples of what are paid out of those lines, uh the Newcastle Community Media Center, um that is the, the annual allocation that we use to fund the media center, uh we just haven't made that payment this year, that's why the actual was zero, but we will make that, it's just a lump sum check. So, uh any board members have any uh questions about these lines?
Um, no, I don't.
No, okay, uh we'll jump forward to the supervisors page, that's fifty-five, there's not much in here. Some of these lines, these were traditional departments and budget lines that were set up, I think if I had a municipality to set up from scratch, I might have set up the departments differently, but for whatever reason, the town historian expense comes out of this line, the Memorial Day Parade, and uh just some conferences and travel and dues, not much changes here, um the historian is, expense, uh I think that's Lauren, I think that's the Horace Greeley statue that we get uh refurbished, I think it's every other year, and any other plaques or anything that Gray recommends to us.
Yeah, Rob, I have a question about um America two fifty, I know committee is starting to form, and so those, just looking at Memorial Day Parade expense being here,
Yep.
I'm just wondering if events surrounding that um period of celebration, where would, where would that go?
I'd probably go back and, and put it under those, uh the town board special events, and that's kinda why I think uh we would bump those lines back up to what they originally were, um we had uh we had originally, um we were looking at historical costs in those budget lines and, and I think factoring that in, we had just a real brief conversation with Ike yesterday, I, I had mentioned the two fifty celebration, him a couple weeks ago, and we touched on it a little bit yesterday, and um Vicky, I know you mentioned that there is a, a group formed, uh and you know, I, I had mentioned that Ike, uh you know, they were possibly looking for staff member uh for their input and to join the group, and Ike would be happy to do that, he's got, he's starting to formulate some ideas uh for what the town could sponsor, and uh so that's, that's on everybody's radar now.
Right, and just so everyone knows, um so we would begin to work with the Historical Society, the, there's a new executive director, um Mia, I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name now, but I'm going to meet her next week. And so she just started to think about it and had an ad hoc group come together, which I think has done some very useful pre- preliminary thinking about it. And I know that there are other people um a- around and about some, for the arts and culture, and so people are starting to, to come together and it's
Arts and cultures, we isn't.
beginning to coalesce, so I think that having the staff rec department involved, I know that Ike has the real expertise in um event planning.
Yep.
So uh that would be great, so I, you know, I look forward to having that come together pretty soon.
And Ike reminded me.
Yeah, if you want existed, let me know, you know, if you want to, I suppose we couldn't have more than two town board member if there was a committee.
It'll be meetings, yeah, all forty-five.
Yeah. But um I'll, I'll keep you posted as to what I, what I find out.
Ike reminded me of the event that he uh held a couple years back, um it was the Millwood two hundred, celebrating the anniversary of Millwood. And uh he had an event at Gedney Park with some food trucks and et cetera, and that was.
It was, that was a fabulous event, that was a great time.
Yeah, it was a, a successful event, so I think uh, you know, Ike, Ike is the right guy to uh to prov- provide his expertise there.
Yeah, he has a lot of experience.
Food trucks, beer trucks, didn't we have, didn't we have a lot of stuff there, food, alcohol, I'm mistaken?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Uh and Ike also mentioned.
Do something fun?
Ike also mentioned that he thought funding for that may come from uh, from sponsorships, uh I hadn't thought about that, but uh Ike, during the uh Millwood two hundred um we did have sponsorships for those events, and some of the local businesses, uh you know, the town doesn't go out and fundraise, we're not, we're not really able to knock on doors, but uh oftentimes when um, you know, when town businesses hear about that, they wanna be associated with it, and they reach out to us, and that's been the case with some of the sponsors for the summer concert program and the, the uh Five K Race and the Ragamuffin Parade and the Fishing Derby, we've had sponsorships for those over the last several years, so. We've had sponsorships for those over the last several years, so Ike mentioned that we would probably be able to have sponsors to to. Help defray some of the costs for those, that event.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, just jumping to town administrator line, uh, again, not an awful lot changes there, basically. It's a lot of dues and office supplies, et cetera. Uh, meal allowance when, uh, when we hold events for town hall and we need, uh. When we provide food. Uh, jump over Carl, I'll let you take a look at, uh, controller. This is page sixty-four. Anything that stands out. I I will point out that we had mentioned, uh. Diana was probably going to retire next year. We had originally.
Sorry, can I interrupt before we move on?
Yep.
Um, I just had a question about insurance, um.
Okay.
Under the liability insurance.
What page are you on?
Back on sixty.
Okay.
Um, I just, I noticed that there's no increase, is that a good thing?
So we we believe so. We've left most of those lines flat this year. Uh, if you remember, we ended up, uh. Working with RJ to the the prior insurer that we had, um. The reason they kept raising the rates on us is we had those large claims and they said frankly to us, we need to make our money back on you. So they ended up coming in with a really high quote this year, and we said, okay, we we kind of accepted that. We were having a difficult time. RJ has always looked for other insurers, but we had a difficult times in the past. Part of the reason we've always mentioned is the Minkle Dam. But we we were able to find somebody else. We actually had two other people bid. One ended up withdrawing late. But we ended up getting a bid that came in less than if you look at the twenty-four actual, which was four thirty-five and the twenty, uh, five actual. Which is four eighteen. We actually were able to lower our insurance rate, so a couple, one of the things that we did was we actually. We took a look at the level of claims and we re- we increased our deductible, which lowered the rate for us. So we are hopeful with a a year with this new insurer and we're, you know, this is something that you can never predict. Some of the situations that we had, the generator imploding, uh, the oil tank leak at the Bedford Road pump station. Some of these that were very large claims, we couldn't predict and we still can't predict. Um, but I will point out, we keep a budget line, a contingency line of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. So that's kind of a, uh. It's a buffer in case we miss on budget estimates on those lines, so. Um, w- we think we're comfortable there. If we have good claims history with this insurer and they haven't, uh, you know, typically. An insurer, if we pay a a premium, i- if our claims are a third of the premium or less. Uh, that's, that reflects well on the municipality, so we've had that the last two years. So we've got a good history going forward and we're just, we're hoping that that trend continues, but if it doesn't, we do have funds in the contingency line.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to drag you back, but I just wanted to.
No, no, not a problem at all, no. That's something that, yeah, it's a huge expense for the town and it definitely bears, uh, discussing.
Alright, so to jump back to controllers, um. I think Rob started mentioning that, um, I think it was a discussion last year about Diana's intending retirement. Um, while it didn't come this year, it is coming next year, so we are planning on her retiring. Uh, there was an allocation made last year and some part-time help to bring her back to help close out some projects. Um, while we, or help onboard somebody to replace her, we're leaving that in for next year. We don't anticipate using that this year because she'll remain on staff full-time. Um, so that really.
And Carl, I just, I wanna point out that the the staff for the last ten or twelve years. Uh, prior to Patty's retirement, the staff in that office had always been five. We've been operating with four since July of last summer, so. Um, what what the anticipation is, is that we'll have four full-time. And then we would bring Diana back after she retires and and takes a nice vacation. She would come back on a couple of days a week on a project basis. There's some capital projects that she wants to clean up and and just some, uh. Further transitioning, so that's what, uh, we put in the part-time line there. Uh, so it would be basically four and a half employees in the controller's office as opposed to the traditional five that we've had.
Um, other than that, the only other major changes are, uh, the stipend, which was, um. Which was Rob's, but wa- uh, I think that was yours for, uh, deputy administrator.
That's correct, yeah.
Which no longer is needed in that line, and then the longevity pay is Rob's. Moving over to the administrator role and, uh, obviously, uh, I'm not there at longevity, so that it's just being reduced for that reason. Uh, only other changes in that line, uh, dues, that's, uh, the, uh, Government Financial Officers Association is changing how they. Allocate memberships and of course, it's never in our benefit, yeah, you never go down in terms of your dues, so. Um, that's just a change. It's, uh, NYGFOA and National GFOA there. Uh, maintenance and repair are general increases to, uh, contracts that we have. Um, and audit is the same, that is just the annual increase in our rate for O'Connor Davies. Uh, but next year is the last year, I believe, Rob, that we, uh, or no, we have them through the fiscal year end, twenty-six.
I think we have. Twenty-six, correct, yes, so they will complete the twenty-six audit in twenty-seven. It'll still be under contract at that point.
Which is five is that?
Uh, that's on page sixty-five, uh, audit.
I'm sorry, go back, just go back to maintenance and repair, what what's?
Uh, maintenance and repair.
Who inspected this year?
That's KVS.
Yes, that's what that is. So that's our, uh, financial system. Uh, that's the annual license for that and the contract for that's going up about two and a half percent for shy of that, so. Um. Moving on to central services, uh, things are remaining relatively consistent here. The only increase, we're budgeting a five percent increase to match the increase in postage rates. We don't anticipate mailing more, but seeing as the rate went up about five percent, we're just gonna build that in. As additional cost, and this is the postage throughout town hall that just gets allocated here.
Right, and that's, uh, that's for mailing all the tax bills, uh, three times a year. You have, uh, first and second half school taxes, you have. Town taxes, uh, and any other mailings that happen throughout town. Uh, that also applies to the annual water mailer that we send out, um. Yep.
And I don't believe that current actual number, uh, includes the postage that was used for the last tax mailing yet. So that should go up at least another four or five thousand dollars, so. Um, and then public health, uh, varying the same. Uh, Rob, that's the drug-free communities, money if I remember correctly.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the, yeah, Newcastle United for Youth, the Drug Free Communities Grant, the federal grant that we received. Uh, we budgeted for one twenty-five, we budgeted corresponding revenue line at one twenty-five. Uh, they haven't reached that number or even close to it in the past few years, so, uh, there's no real budgetary effect. It's a, it's a one-for-one reimbursement, so if we spend it, we get it back. Uh, I just budget the max, uh, which is what the grant is. And I will say that, uh, again, and and we've worked closely with, um. Lee Barth and Leslie Kuhn, uh, they've been involved from the beginning, as have I, and we were just awarded. Uh, the final year of the grant, the tenth year of the grant, which, uh, we do need to apply each year. And we've continued to receive it, so that's a definite credit to Lee and Leslie. Who, uh, even as their kids have finished up, graduated high school, I think they've graduated college at this point, uh. They have still remained involved and that's fantastic.
So the the final year is twenty-six or twenty-seven?
It is, uh, it's an odd fiscal year. It's, uh, it's October one of twenty-five. Through October one of twenty-six. I'm sorry, September thirty of twenty-six, so the tenth year started already, uh, seven days ago, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I don't know, how much is postage for the year? It's from across the town?
So.
Uh, close.
That's a ten thousand dollar line?
Looks like thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Thirty.
Page sixty-six.
So I'm curious, and this may be a legal question. Is. Wh- what what, is there a way that we can incentivize the town residents to sign up for? For email notifications? And we can discount them on something as a one-shot, but over period of time, that'll save us a load of money. Because I I I don't know, are mandated to now, this may be a legal question, but if you can get people to sign up and say, I'll give you, I'm making, totally making it up. You know, twenty-five dollars off your parking, ten dollars off your parking, um. And you can save a significant portion of that thirty-one thousand dollars a year. That adds up over time. I I don't know if you can, I don't know if you're mandated as a.
So, you you are not.
I. All mailing.
At this time, you're not permitted. You're not permitted to send tax bills out, uh, any other way. They have to be sent hard copy by US mail. And the, uh, water mailing, the annual water mailing also has to be sent.
And is that, is that the major, does that make the majority of our mailing?
The majority of that, I think, is taxes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so I see that so, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
We did, we did have a discussion around the water mailer, about seeing if there was some way to do, say, a postcard with a QR code where you could go online and read something about that.
Right, right, other ways where she's already do.
And you, uh, pay the postcard rate, which is about, you know, a third of what the first-class mailing rate is, but.
And we can't.
And the printing.
Uh, we.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
But we can't do that.
Uh, we've had the discussion, but, uh, you know, right now, then you've reached, you know, are people gonna be able to use the QR code? Are you, you know, are you, uh, disadvantaged, Jingo? Is it, you know, you don't have a cell phone or capability to to get online that way? It's, you know, it's a, it's a careful balance in that respect. Um, and for.
Maybe then you only have to mail it out to the people who request it or something like that.
But it's probably more of a question for Chris and Pete. In terms of, of this, if you can, if they can legislate to allow it, is it because we can't, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it but it's also the realities of accessibility. And 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 not just the legalities, because if you have people who just can't get it, for whatever whatever you do. Then that's a problem, you know, it's their tax bill and they won't be paying it on time and have to bear all the costs and.
I think the water mailer is probably where we have a most common.
Well, the water mailer is not the tip, right.
But that's, I mean, I mean, that's not, we tend to shove a lot of stuff in there, just it's heavy.
But, yeah, there's so much more, I mean, than there, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, they they expanded that this year though, didn't they? I I think they've, they added something to the required communication this year that added a page to the mailing.
Hmm, yes, yes, the actual, the actual water report was longer.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's a bigger document, so it costs more to print, fold. Uh, and of course, um, like we should say, we put.
Which ninety-two percent of the residents just toss it anyway.
Yeah, but we have a bunch of other stuff we put in there as well. That's, that's like a tall, nothing, homie, homie.
Yes.
Right, I I recall what else we. I recall what else we said, but we thought it was a good opportunity to send something, uh, do you recall what that called?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yes.
SAB license and stuff.
I think you got a lot, yeah, we have to do with some of that.
We sent out the SAB, we sent out the stuff on Gedney. We sent out stormwater, um, it's an outreach for, um, Sabrina for the stormwater. We sent out something to remind people to renew their parking permits.
We do the trash.
I think, we did, um, the trash schedule goes out, Sep- September on that, yeah.
The scheduling, right? Okay.
Um, it was also, um, stuff in the building department with, um, this sewer line, replacing the sewer lines to the houses. Um, it was, um.
A lot of those things were actually required to send out, right?
Building requirement. Yeah, like, so we have to send out the water quality report, that's a requirement from the health department. And the stormwater outreach, we have to do a certain amount of outreach, so that helps Sabrina check.
Yep.
That was it, like, stormwater outreach. I mean, we've always found a, an opportunity with that mailing.
Mm-hmm. Since that, yeah.
That, we've taken advantage of, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just one, one thing, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a, you know, Rob, we, yeah, we've extended it to Newcastle United for Youth, they put in something there as well.
Yep.
We just send it to, we've ha- we've, we do it for the fire department and.
But as soon as we get over the first-class rate, postage gets a lot more expensive, right?
Forward.
See that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the incremental for adding a page is is not bad, and that's why we've done it before, rather than. Some of these standalone mailings, if you remember, it was last year, the year before, the SAB wanted to do a standalone mailing and we included their flyer in. With the town flyer, um, because it is so expensive, so yeah, there's definitely a cost, but I think, um. You know, a- a- again, the, some of the required things that we're, we have to send hard copies on right now is just. We don't have a choice.
I think we should just be careful that we're not adding. Stuff that people are just throwing away. I mean, if we have, if we're required to send stuff, then there's no way around them. That's probably the most efficient way to do it, but.
Mm-hmm.
If we just, you know, if incrementally, we keep saying, oh, one more page, no big deal, one more page, no big deal, it could actually add up to a lot.
Yeah, agree.
Okay, so I think that covers, uh, any of the departmental budget lines. I did wanna just highlight a couple of special districts. To you that, uh, had a big impact on the budget this year. We, you know, we're talking about the tax cap. And the the tax cap is a cap on the levy that we can increase, so this year had a total of a hundred, uh, sorry, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. That we could increase the tax levy by, so, uh, some of the things that contributed were, um. One of the items was the, uh, enhanced ambulance district, and the board will remember, this is page. Uh, let's see, where do I wanna jump to? This is page, uh, number two oh two. Page two oh two in the enhanced ambulance district, and this is the area that covers, uh, the the C-VAC area and the area that's covered by WEMS. So the board will remember, I think in, uh, twenty-three, in the summer of twenty-three, the board approved. Uh, adding a Lo Sap, uh, which is a pension service or a pension benefit for volunteer ambulance corps. And what you have to do is, uh, your. When you respond to a number of calls each year, you get service credit for that year, and each year that you you get a a service credit. You then, when you retire, you'll get a benefit.
Is it closer to hours work, days work?
Uh, there's a formula, I don't, I I thought it was, yeah. I think it might be hours work, but yeah, but they they track your participation, so just to say you are a member of C-VAC, but you don't. Actively go on any calls, you won't accumulate any service credit for that.
I think he's.
Um. So we added that benefit and, uh, this was something we found out that almost all the other local VACs. Offered that and we were, we had never been approached and we weren't aware of it, so, um, this is something, you know, it's only. It pertains to anybody in the, in that ambulance district, which is a a lot of the town. Uh, so we added that benefit last year, that was a hundred and ten thousand, and then we added, um. Th- they did a research, wha- uh, WEMS, which is the, uh, the fly car service, the advanced life support. That shows up to, uh, when you call nine-one-one and, uh, it's a serious injury, it's not just, uh, uh, you know, you you broke your foot or something. When it's a serious life-threatening injury and the advanced life support comes, uh. They were noticing a a uptick in their response times and especially during peak periods, so what they had proposed was to add. An additional car to their fleet, and with the car, of course, comes, you have to staff it, you have to have an employee drive it, so. Uh, they added that for twelve hours a day. They they, their studies. Told them they didn't need it for twenty-four hours a day, but they needed it for the twelve peak hours during the day, so we added that. So that was actually added, it it's in place currently. We didn't need to raise the tax levy for that last year because we had some fund balance that we offset it with. Uh, unfortunately, the fund balance has been expended and that's why we're taking the hit on the tax levy this year, so. I just wanted to point that out, I I don't think anybody would argue with, uh, number one, rewarding. Our volunteers for the hard work that they do, and we're also hoping that by having the pension program, we incentivize people to either stay with the VAC. With C-VAC or join C-VAC, uh, and I I think everybody would be in favor of, uh, reducing the response times. Uh, so, you know, there's a cost that that comes to that, and, uh, that tax levy went up, uh. For that district there by about a hundred and forty thousand. Um, so I'll point that one out, and the other that I'm gonna point out is Northern Fire Protection District, and the board will remember. These costs have jumped significantly over the last probably five or six years. Northern Fire Protection District is a, uh, is a district in town, so. Northern Fire Protection District is a uh is a district in town, so we have two independent taxing uh fire districts, Millwood and Newcastle in the in the town. There's an area that is difficult for them to reach and that's the area bordering uh the Mount Kisco area. So we get fire protection services from the village town of Mount Kisco, uh and it's a contractual obligation. We pay their contractual fee. Well, as part of that, they did renovations on all three of their firehouses within the last five years. And there was some significant borrowing that came along with that. Unfortunately, that got passed along to our residents. And this is something the board will remember. Jeremy, you've probably heard this a bunch of times over the last uh several years that um these costs, the the town has to accept their share. There's an apportionment in this uh district, so the town of Newcastle has fire protection services from uh from Mount Kisco, the town of Bedford as well. Uh and a small portion that uh Newcastle Fire serves also has to contract with Mount Kisco. So um you'll see a big.
And we pay disproportionate amount to Mount Kisco to dis- for for our usage.
We, we we believe that it's disproportionate. So the the formula is based solely on assessed value. Uh we had this discussion, yeah, not call volume, not density, um nothing like that. It's strictly on assessed value, which you would imagine Newcastle uh area has a higher assessed value than Mount Kisco. So we approached Mount Kisco years ago. Uh they were not interested in changing the formula, which you can imagine because it's beneficial to them that we absorb more of their costs than they do.
And they overran their their costs, if I recall, they had to circle back.
They had to borrow a second time because when they originally, it was a, it was a mistake in their bidding process, their bid did not reflect a second floor on one of the firehouses that they were at. So they had to go and borrow millions more. So uh in any case, Carl and I have been in conversation with um uh the comptroller over in Bedford. And we're working, the the agreement that we had has expired. Um there's, we don't have a lot of leverage here. We need this protection service. Um but we're gonna try to work with Bedford and see and and with Newcastle Fire District, I've spoken to them as well, to see if we can kinda get a more equitable distribution. And we're also looking to confirm that the costs are applicable to the town. So we're gonna try to see if we can um I don't know if we'll get a full-on audit, but we're we're going to kinda dig deeper into the costs that are being uh included in this. So I wanted to point that out to the board. This is fire protection, it's necessary. Uh when we talked about this years ago, Jill and I met with uh representatives from Millwood Fire and Newcastle Fire. And we said, what would be the chance that you guys could take any of this uh on and and bring this in-house? And the the problem was the response times and they just did not feel comfortable that they could reach some of these places as fast as Mount Kisco could. So um that's where we are. Those are the two special districts I wanted to highlight and just mention why there are significant increases. But if you see the increase, we're about a hundred and thirty thousand or so increase in the tax levy there too. So these two combined special districts have taken up more than a quarter of the entire uh tax levy increase that we're allowed to increase under the tax cap. So uh just some of the. Yep.
I I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the Northern Fire Protection District to make sure I am understanding. So the formula is not something driven by the state? That was a agreement that the town made with Mount Kisco?
This was an agreement that goes back years. Um we have had a difficult time finding the original agreements. We found some subsequent agreements.
Yeah.
Uh they don't give us a lot of leverage. Um we are required, i- it's a, again, it's a formula amongst the the different entities. And the sole purpose of apportionment is the assessed value. When Jill and I uh looked at this years back and and Robbie Bancroft, our our fire inspector helped us out a lot. He's worked at the county and he's a volunteer as well. Uh and he kinda helped us put together, we actually got call volume, uh and we went to them and said, you know, let's let's see if we can get a more equitable distribution and they weren't interested. Uh and unfortunately for us, they don't have to be. Um that that's how the agreement had always been. Um we, it's currently expired, but they're still providing the service and we're still paying under the prior terms.
Okay.
Yeah. So uh like I said, Carl and I are gonna dig into this and and hope that we can get some movement on this uh and uh see if we can get a more equitable distribution. And I I'll point out too uh the the prior district I spoke of, the ambulance district, the WEMS organization, they use four different criteria for apportioning costs uh with that consortium. And and they do use assessed value and they use call volume. Uh I think they use parcel count within the district. I can't remember what the fourth criteria is. Um but that seems to be more equitable, so no one factor uh has that much influence and and certainly assessed value.
Yeah, I mean, what what I've seen with these uh consortiums and the way to apportion values, very seldom is it now just purely assessed value. It's usually a formula that includes assessed value, but usually some form of a usage. Um you know, I've seen that.
Yeah, I mean, that that's a demonstration of of using the resources.
I would say. Situation.
Yeah.
Right. Right, so I can understand the formula. But uh I mean, this seem, this is, I think, kind of an antiquated way to do it.
Very simple. It's o- overly simple. The only other apportionments I've seen of this
Yeah. Right.
type are school districts. And that's because you just apportion school district, you know, taxes based on assessed value of where those plots land within your, within your district.
Well, yeah, there's another example, BOCES is a huge consortium and their costs used to be allocated based on assessed value, but now it's
But there. Mm-hmm.
you know, a combination of.
So they've updated.
Enrollment and assessed value, so. Right, that that was updated after the big fight. Yeah, so this is very very similar. But um yeah, I mean, hundred percent assessed value was is is an old model. So.
Yeah.
Well, there you are.
So uh say, there I am.
Hello.
So so ends our uh our budget presentation this evening, I think. Uh.
Yeah, I just I just wanna add, I just wanna reinforce that the um some of the big drivers of the increases are really are are aspects of um service that the community can easily understand. I mean, uh our volunteer ambulance corps is extremely important and everyone knows that and and certainly the response time is something that people understand is um, you know, not not something you wanna fool around with. So the extra WEMS car is, you know, understandable as well as the retention of our, you know, C-VAC. So those are two, two of the big items. If I understand, if I understand you correctly.
Yeah, I, those are a couple of the big drivers uh with our increase in tax levy. Uh you had some other stuff. We still have the uh refuse fund. If you'll remember, five years ago, that when we renegotiated that contract, we had a one million dollar increase over the prior year, which uh we were unable to raise taxes by a million dollars. It would have been a a big hit for the residents of the town and it would have been a big, uh we wouldn't have been able to do it under the tax cap. So what we did is we had uh, we put a schedule together using uh smaller increases in tax levy and uh then declining increases in um in fund balance. So we had a responsible drawdown of the fund balance. We still have very healthy fund balance in the refuse fund uh as a percentage of the expense. And uh the increase in the uh refuse levy, this year only amounts to a a nineteen-dollar increase for each resident. Uh which is uh lower than it's been in the past. So but that was as a, as an effect on the overall levy, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as well. So uh yeah, those are a couple of the main drivers for the tax levy increase.
Okay. All right, I think we're, we're at the end for today anyhow.
For today.
We'll be meeting on Friday.
Continued.
We continue um Friday morning.
Friday morning.
Eight AM.
Yeah. I'll be there in person.
Okay. All right, thank you very much to everyone. I I I just wanna thank all of the staff as well for working, you know, Rob and Carl. We've done a great job. I mean, the budget is is really laid out very clearly, so thank you for all the work. And thank you to all the department heads as well.
Indeed, thank you.
Yeah.
As always.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess I I will call for a motion to adjourn the work session.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night.